All right, we're going to call this meeting back to order. And the first thing that we're going to, or what we're going to begin with, is going to be an update from Burkie Brown for DEI. He's next.
You know, I mean, seriously, right? I make, I had one job. I'll just face it this way. Oh, yeah? Is it HDMI? Because I do have a port. Trying not to take too much time. Oh, yeah, that's... What is that? Would you look at that? There we go. Okay, thank you. How's everybody doing? It's good to see everyone. Look at us, making that work. Okay. So, just wanted to provide an update on what's going on in diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. And so, as this rolls up, ultimately, we've finished the first phase of the work, the foundational work that we've been doing for the city of Eureka through the HR department, which has really kind of set this in motion over four years ago. And the great news is that we've created that foundation where we got clear on what are the values? What's the culture that we want to create? What's the vision that we want to create? And so, as we've done that and that foundation has been created, it's now, we're in a place of maintenance. How do we maintain it? How do we have this go deeper into the fabric of the community? Deeper into the fabric of everybody that is working for the city staff and working for the city and serving the city as a whole? We established the core elements. There we go. Nope, not yet. We're fine. We're fine. I appreciate your work. Thank you so much. But I'll just talk through it for right now. All right, when it comes up, it will come up. But establishing core elements has been done. And now, we're at a place where we're exploring kind of leadership opportunities. So, it's not something where a third party is only the one that's engaged in this effort. It's how do we expand it beyond that space? How do we engage beyond that? The magic button? We'll let it, I'll just blather on. It's been marvelous. I always love coming up here. I really, really, really do. So, what I just came up here for initially was for procedural justice and implicit bias. We just had the conversation. It was a packed house at the Orfinger, which was amazing. And being able to just have that conversation. We've already done procedural justice and implicit bias. And then, being able to have it again with more new employees that have come in and be able to have that conversation and say, "This is who we are." Three years ago, four years ago, we decided that this is our vision. These are the values. This is how we want inclusion and belonging to be shown and seen within who we are as individuals and as a city. And then, being able to teach it again. And what was so wonderful is everybody, there was the receptivity as well as though he was there. It was, it was great today. And you can see that people are really connected and truly wanting to see, okay, yes, I want to create a city that is more inclusive, that has more of a sense of belonging, where we're listening to the voices of individuals. But at the same time, they see where it's beneficial towards themselves. Because at the end of the day, the individual growing creates the communal growing. And that's something that I'm really excited to see having continue. In the same way, we're trying to get to a place where it's no longer going to be just, as I said, third party that is doing this training. We want to train trainers to be able to step up and facilitate. So, we have the Equity Consortium that has come up. We have leaders within the department heads that are engaging in ways. We're actually going to have a meeting tomorrow to see on what movements have been made and what we want to be able to make shifts on in terms of improving and spreading that DEI culture that we want to spread. So, excited about that. It's not showing? Okay. No worries. That's fine. I'll send this, I'll, thank you for trying, everybody. Round of applause. No, I, there you go. So, the Equity Consortium, what we're doing is we're collab, they're working together to collaborate and create more ways where it's not just happening within the city staff, but it's also working within the community as a whole. HR has been doing an incredible job. The Juneteenth celebration is going to be coming up. And they're preparing a space for that to occur. Pride Month activities have been put together. And then, also, inclusive leadership training, which is partnering with the county through Humboldt Equity Consortium to create community leaders and invite leaders throughout the community to promote diversity and leadership. The goal is to maintain momentum at this place. Yes, we've done the beginning work, but the goal is to keep it going. Make it a part and embed it into the fabric of every single individual that works here and then also the community as a whole. Continuing progress. We're going to be doing more education. And then, at the same time, something that I really want to implement is informal discussions. Because after the talk occurs, what discussions are happening? Is everybody engaging? Yes, we talked about the commitments we want to make, but we want follow-up to make sure that those commitments are being enacted, right? Where the accountability shows up. And all that we're holding ourselves accountable to is the vision that we claimed. And what we were talking about today in procedural justice is that if these are our values, if we're not living by them, then there's a cognitive dissonance. And we have the freedom to be able to communicate with each other to say, hey, this is who we say we are. This is how we want to show up. And seeing everybody on board has been extremely, extremely encouraging. So, it's a shared responsibility and we're all working together, really happy about what's going to be coming in the next few months. The education that's happening, the training of the trainers, and then empowering other leaders, even throughout the departments, to be able to step up and facilitate some of these discussions. Because the more that it's happening, the more that, the more that I get to step back, the more that this third party is out and it comes in from the inside, that's really when you know that it's grafted to the culture. And I've seen such incredible thing the past four years. As everybody knows, I've been able to communicate and chat with everybody here and some of the people here. I'm so grateful for it. It's so real. And the thing that is most important for me and what I enjoy the most is the receptivity. The fact that everybody really wants to, there's a quote, says, "Better as possible, good is not enough." And seeing that that effort is being made and that people are really showing up and the fact that I'm here again really shows that it is something that's important. So, wanted to give and provide that update. Thank you so much for letting me speak with you. And I'll leave this laptop alone.
Thank you, Burkie. And back along the lines of "Our future is so bright," I would like to invite Noel Braggup to give his Martin Luther King Day presentation. Thank you so much for being here. We hope you won your game last meeting.
Hi, everyone. I'm Noel. First, I'd like to say thank you to the city of Eureka for this opportunity and of course, everybody for coming. The theme for this speech today is, it starts with me, the urgency of creating a beloved community. The King Center describes beloved community as a place where all conflicts are resolved peacefully and a place where we work together as a community to make sure everyone has everything they need. Dr. King once said, "The aftermath of nonviolence is the creation of beloved, of the beloved community." So that when the battle's over, a new relationship becomes, comes between the oppressed and the oppressor. Dr. King understood that zero conflict is an unattainable goal. Conflict is human nature. It's how we resolve those conflicts that we can change. He felt that world nonviolence was key to a peaceful world and nonviolence should be used to solve all conflicts. To me, beloved community is a place or a group of people, no matter how big or small, where people are free and all problems are solved with its nonviolence. To me, a beloved community is a place where everyone has everything they need and everyone is equal. I believe that the beloved community isn't just a goal. It's a series of goals that we need to take steps towards. In order to obtain the beloved community, we have to eliminate the triple evils: militarism, poverty, and racism. These are the three things that are holding us back from the beloved community. In order to start building a beloved community here in Humboldt, we need to eliminate the triple evil. That could mean helping people getting housing and getting back on their feet. It could also mean supporting local community groups like NAACP, Black Humboldt, H.C. Obama, Be Black, Central DePueblo, Hawaiian, Asian, Pacific Islander, or any of the hundreds of local community organizations supporting our community. More importantly, it would mean teaching our young ones about nonviolence by modeling and practicing alternative ways to express anger in front of your children. Never forget, we are always watching and learning from what we see adults do around us. Supporting youth and children to be effective leaders at the youngest age possible is crucial for cultivating a beloved community. You can, you can't learn to lead if you don't practice it. And yet, to be good at it, you have to practice a lot. Allow children to start learning by providing them with opportunities to lead, talking, leading their kindergarten class. You can support your kid to be a leader in so many ways. You can help them take control of their life and taking responsibilities for decisions. If we do this, I believe that Humboldt will become a community of leaders. Like I said, the theme of this speech is, it starts with me, the urgency of creating a beloved community. If you'd like to aid in creating a beloved community, there are so many things you can do. As a child, it's easy to feel like you can't do anything. It's easy to feel powerless. Something anyone can do is practice ways of peacefully resolving conflicts. By practicing nonviolence, you are already helping to build a beloved, a beloved community. It starts with you. If you wait for someone to start something, then it will never happen. You have to take action. Own your leadership and begin acting. Begin small, but begin. It doesn't matter how small the steps or, it doesn't matter how small the steps or what it matters is you're doing something and sticking to it. My dad says that once time, attention, effort, and presence are more valuable than money. You don't, you don't have to have money or power. You just need commitment and willingness to work together. In which case, all we need is an enduring commitment and the rest will work itself out. Let's come together and commit to building our beloved community now. Thank you.
Thanks, Noel. I think many of us should read that every day as a reminder. We can make a difference. Thank you so much. That was wonderful. I just have a couple of mayor's announcements. I'm still recovering, so I've been kind of laying low. But I was grateful that I got to spend, I guess this is a youth meeting really, because I got to spend the afternoon with City Manager Slattery. We met with the high school students from Eureka High with Miguel Guerrero and the planning department and Mr. Parker from Eureka High for the neighborhood naming project. And it was really exciting to hear these kids and to watch them come together to, and do surveys and to figure out names for the neighborhoods. And I just have to say that some of them are pretty funny. One of them, let's see, I told him I was going to read this. This was Caleb's. The Getting High on the West Side was one. Sequoia District, Chinatown, Pat's Place, Cement Street. Anyway, the opportunity for our youth to be involved in our city, I think, is really incredible and I really appreciate it. And I hope that we can continue this partnership so that our kids can grow up and we can again have the brighter future that we all deserve. So, I really, again, Noel, you just blew my mind today. Thank you so much. And so, with that, we will go to public comment. Oh, no, I wanted to say one more thing. I got to go to Lemonade Day Two with Mayor, past Mayor Susan Seaman. And it was a really great time. We went to lots of different stands. I drank seven glasses of lemonade and had a lemon Rice Krispie treat. So, wasn't feeling too good later in the afternoon. But you know, it was great for the, to be out with the kids and to support them in what they're doing. Because again, our future is so bright. It's just so bright. And I'm just so grateful to be a part of that. So, now, we will move on to public comment. This is the time for members of the public who wish to be heard on matters that do not appear on the agenda. City Council policy is to limit each speaker to three minutes. Such time allotment or portion thereof shall not be transferred to other speakers. The public will be allowed to speak concurrently with the calling of an agenda item following the staff presentation of that item. In pursuit to the Brown Act, the city council may not take action on an item that does not appear on the agenda. And is anyone here for public comment? For items not on the agenda? Hello?
I bet you're happy to see my smiling face once again after such a long absence. I wanted to start out, well, actually, before he leaves the room, I wanted to commend that young man for his ideals and for his optimism. He sounds just like me when I was around that age. And, and I hope that when life smacks him in the face with reality, that he deals with it better than I did because I became an awfully cynical old bastard. So, I hope that doesn't happen to you. Keep it up, Ben. Beyond that, the Alzheimer's presentation, I wanted to, I don't know if any of them are left in the room, but I wanted to say how much I appreciated what they do. My father died of Alzheimer's. It was not a pretty way to go. There are probably some here in this room that wish I had it. But unfortunately for you all, I'm still sharp as a tack. But anyways, yeah, I, I support what they do and I appreciate it. And I just wanted to make sure that, that they knew that I'm not always just complaining about things. I really, really appreciate them. Beyond that, then we go on to, I noticed we no longer have a sergeant-at-arms in the room. And I was wondering if that was because the threats that were made against me for my inappropriate and obscene speech and whatnot, derogatory terms, and, and the reason that the, our sergeant-at-arms was put in here. And then, in the last, you know, since then, we've had a council member and a mayor who have opened the door to the outhouse, so to speak, with asshole and oh shit. And, and basically made it to where I can speak freely the way I want to when I'm talking about the bullshit going on in this town. You know, on the way down here, I came down I, or I Street. I've been up and down H and I Streets, I don't know, dozens of times since we opened our beautiful new bicycle freeway. I actually saw a bicyclist this time, the first time, very first time. Unfortunately, the, the ungrateful cretin was walking his bicycle on the sidewalk. He wasn't even using the beautiful lane that we made for him. And I didn't see a flat tire, so I guess it was his choice. Maybe there's too much traffic on H and I for a bicyclist to feel safe. And beyond that, we go on to, you know, just, just a lot of, you know, the bullshit. People say, why don't I say anything positive? And, but the thing about it is, is that many of us have come to you with positive suggestions and they've been ignored continuously. So, once again, you know, it's like, I think you guys are on a bullshit agenda. You're dead set on it. You're not going to get, break away from it. And, and that's, and what we say doesn't mean anything. So, screw you all.
Thank you.
First off, good to be back here. I work for a doctor and our clients are mainly geriatric. We always joke in the office that the average age of our clients is about 100. So, I appreciate the awareness for forms of degenerative brain diseases because we work with that clientele. But I'm here to talk about other issues as usual. As an immigrant, a third-generation Holocaust survivor, whose mother was born here in exile, as a father of a daughter of mixed descent, I'm here to tell my fellow Americans that the time to be silent and timid is over. I call upon all caring, compassionate, and conscious citizens to oppose the godless, ruthless, and clueless agenda of those pathetic provincial amateurs up there to stand up and demand transparency, accountability, and responsibility from their selected officials up on this pedestal. These incompetent, corrupt, and self-serving criminals should be driven out of office, trialed, and sentenced for their transgressions. These faggots, freaks, and failures prey on the constant constraint and good-heartedness of us, the people, butcher the golden goose for grant money, and deprive us all of our God-given inalienable rights to freedom, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. It's time to take off the blinders, the muzzle, and the gloves and recall these unapologetic ideologues that want to subvert our children, poison their bodies, minds, and souls, and line their pockets in the process. This council and the mayor should be recalled. And some of them would really look good in orange jumpsuits. Silencing individuals, dehumanizing critics, aligning themselves with every and any scumbag that blows into town to have their ways with us, those inept, dim-witted, uneducated clowns need to go. From Kim, oh shit, Bergel over Leslie Castellini to G. Bacunian Fernandez and Katie Asshole Maltin, those people have proven to support every evil agenda, from drug peddling needle distributors to the, to a garden mocking pile of perverts known as the Sisters of Perpetual Perversion. No one wants your windmills. No one wants your Frankenfish, your vaccine mandates. Your hydrogen buses, and Scooter Bauer, by the way, can shove the exhaust pipe of a three-quarter ton diesel right up his rumpus. Make Eureka safe again. Recall the council, trial the mayor, and get all those scumbags, their minions and rent fields, out of town. Tar and feather them politically. Show them that Miss Liberty doesn't need them, but we need Miss Liberty. In Jesus's name, amen.
So, we don't clap during public comment. And it's only because we want people to feel comfortable when they share. So, thank you for being here. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak? Oh, come on up. Thank you.
Hi.
And now, for something different than that. I'm April Nicolai, Director of Redwood Pride, and just wanted to quick plug our event this weekend, the Seventh Annual Redwood Pride Summer Festival. We will have vendors and tableers at Jefferson from noon to four, which is various people, which is various, various people from throughout the community as well as various health organizations. And then, after that, we'll have an all-ages show also at Jefferson from five to seven. And then, after that, we'll have an evening show at Synapsis, which is 18-plus, from nine to 12. But now that that's done, I'm also here to make comment on to Redwood Pride's stance on the whole Palestine situation because we've come under-
So, could you bring that forward actually during that item? The Palestine, can you bring that forward during that item?
Sorry, I did not look at that.
Yeah, there's a ceasefire resolution later on. And so, it's on the agenda. So, would you be willing to comment at that time on that item?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll come back then.
Okay. An appreciation. Are you talking about the ceasefire?
I'm just speaking in general, actually.
Okay.
Because Redwood Pride, as well as Sisters of Perpetual Indulgence, Queer Humboldt, and Los Coles Pride have been cited as being silent during a lot of this stuff. But there's a reason that we have been. And because, it's because we are nonprofits. And yes, that can affect why we can say, cannot say we are on one side or the other. And this has been true as a threat to us really because only until recently, there's been a bill that's been going through for somebody to be put into a position that if they're taking a stance on it, they can revoke your nonprofit status. And Redwood Pride, as well as Sisters of Perpetual Indulgence, are parts of larger organizations. And we do not want to impact our parent organizations. Because there's also a lot of other people that, that would impact as well. So, that's part of the reason we've been remaining silent. But we've, sorry. Also done so because we don't want to be being seen or dubbed anti-Semitic. Because clearly not, we support everybody. And, sorry, just taking a moment. Basically, all the other organizations I mentioned share a very similar status. I've talked to them, spoken with them. And we're just trying to get a word out officially, publicly, that we are not taking any stance other than supporting a ceasefire. And that's all.
Thank you. And thanks for clarifying that. I'm sorry that I interrupted you. Hello. Welcome.
I've come to congratulate Lane Millar on his 5% pay increase for taking over the financials for Humboldt Bay Fire. A person with staff taking on more work who gets a pay increase. Let's contact that Eureka Police Department. There's a managerial staff of three. There should be four, but because of previous low pay, there aren't enough personnel to promote a fourth. The assistant chief's position remains vacant. The chief and two commanders have each taken a portion of the duties of that person. Additionally, that job is not an office hours job. Hostage situations, critical incidents, et cetera, require the presence of one of these three people in the cold, in the heat, at night, in the rain. And they have to be there until it is resolved, not until they've had enough. If it happens at the end of their already long day and drags on for hours, they're there. And when do you suppose the last time was they had less than a 50 to 60-hour work week, which they don't get overtime pay for? Or how about a real vacation? They didn't receive a pay bump for taking on any of that. In fact, in certain circumstances, some sergeants are earning more than their supervisors and no incentives are added for a commander's education, something officers and sergeants receive. Shame on you for allowing that to happen. I'm grateful beyond words for their loyalty. Maybe you should pay them what they're worth, a novel concept for first responders in this city. It isn't just the police department you underpay. Take five minutes and look at the documents online for surrounding cities and see what they pay their firefighters in benefits and perks. And realize that the firefighters assigned in and around Eureka have a higher call incident rate and their pay is abysmal. I can't imagine they're impressed with Mr. Millar taking over their finances. In the financial advisory not meeting last week, he stated the city had a $15 million reserve and less than a minute later, that became 11 million. Unless there are two different reserve accounts, that's a 4 million discrepancy. And let's not forget the 4.85 million that disappeared from Measure H oversight last year. I'm looking forward to the Measure H presentation. I'm interested to see where almost 12 million in income for that fund will be distributed. And I'm hoping the other category is capped at 8%, around $1 million. Budget policy 2.68 should not be funded as it was a brainchild of staff, not part of the ballot question, and is neither the spirit nor intent of Measure H. I remind you that according to the city's website, Measure H continues to require community and fiscal accountability, including financial audits and an oversight from the Finance Advisory Committee to review Measure H funds to ensure they are spent responsibly on public priorities. And the public priorities listed are to maintain 9/11, fire, paramedic, and police emergency response and preparedness, repair potholes and maintain safe roads, support local business and jobs, maintain youth and senior services, support city and community health services, and continue homeless prevention programs. Let's spend the largesse the voters gave you responsibly as the voters gave it to you, without added things.
Thank you, Judy. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to share in public comment? Seeing none, do you see anybody on Zoom? Althea?
Yep, hey there. So, I just wanted to talk to you guys a little bit about the new bike lanes. I have talked to several bicyclists in the city who I know to be, you know, frequent, you know, longtime bicyclists. And they have all spoken absolutely glowingly about it. They really like that the lane doesn't put them directly next to traffic. They're really excited about that. I'm hopeful that, you know, with those crosstown bike lanes, maybe we'll be able to get the bike cops that people are always asking for. Now that the, the bike cops would hopefully be at less risk of injury, you know, doing their jobs. You know, that kind of thing is one of the main reasons that I don't think the city has used them in a long time. And lots of cities don't use them is, is because it's considered too high risk for the police officers to do their jobs in these conditions. So, again, hopefully, hopefully those lanes make that more likely here in Eureka. Yeah, just, just wanted to speak out in support of that. And also, I will concur that I know Eureka Fire Department firefighters are underpaid. And that is one of the main issues with staffing. So, yeah, I would like to see more support for them. You know, even if people don't necessarily want to pay more for them, they deserve to be paid more. Thank you.
Thanks, Althea. Shannon? Shannon, your hands raised?
Oh, hi. Sorry, I just wanted to say thank you for all that you do. I know that it's a thankless job and I know you don't make any real money doing what you do and you spend hours of your time dedicated to the community and it is noticed. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. Philip?
Thank you. I just want to appreciate both council and staff for the steadfast commitment to the 2040 General Plan, as evidenced by some of the changes we're seeing on H and I and other places around town. This is very heartening to see these things happening. And I'm sure you're as excited as I. I was driving up past and through Arcata the other day and I saw all these buildings popping up where I hadn't been in a little bit. And I got very excited for the- And I got very excited for the future of Eureka and to see what kind of vibrant community we can create with a bit of density and a bit more spaces for businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Phillip. Do you see anyone else, Shannon?
I see no one else.
Okay, seeing no one else, we will close the public comment and move on to public hearings. So this public hearing is regarding the Earth Center SEQA and Disposition and Development Agreement with Danco and City Manager Slattery.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor and Council. Unfortunately, tonight, our Director of Development Services, Kristin Kenyon, is not feeling well, but she is available here to answer the questions that I clearly couldn't answer. But anyway, so this is an agenda item related to the Earth Center. Just to give you some background on the Earth Center, I've been here for close to eighteen years. We've been having discussions about this property for at least the last seven to ten years. The initial discussions about this property surrounded Cal Poly and working with Servitas about seven or eight years ago. Their intention was looking at housing for professors and graduate students. We had preliminary discussions for probably about six or seven months. Nothing came of that. And then more recently, about four years ago, I'm guessing, somewhere around there, we were approached again by Servitas, which was the company, third-party company, that we were working with on those previous discussions. And they were working to look at basically a mixed-use development that would have been in combination with Humboldt Transit Authority and the city. We had discussions with them for approximately six months to a year. Out of that came an MOU that council adopted between the city and Humboldt Transit Authority. Just to back up a little bit, the reason why Humboldt Transit Authority got involved was because they received a grant that would build a transit center, and they came involved as this would have been a mixed-use development that would include housing, some commercial space, as well as a transit center. So, council adopted, approved, an MOU between us and Humboldt Transit Authority. We continued those design charrettes. We were working with an architectural firm called The Smith Group and held, I believe, weekly or bi-weekly meetings for a long period of time to try and work out the agreement and work with Servitas. Eventually, we got to the point of coming to a, an estimate for the project. That estimate was out of the realm of some of the partners that we were with, with Cal Poly. At that point in time, Cal Poly decided that they were still interested in the project, but that working with a third party was becoming too expensive. So at that time, we shifted and had discussions with Cal Poly, HTA and the city, continued those design meetings and trying to figure things out, come up with cost estimates, those type of things. Eventually, it led to there being a funding gap, and that funding gap was not able to be covered by Cal Poly. So we reached out to College of the Redwoods, had discussions with College of the Redwoods for a couple of months at least. They had received some funding from the state for student housing, specifically affordable student housing. Their grant dictated that that money be spent on campus. They were having a hard time making that money accomplish what they were trying to achieve, and so they reached out to us and started to have discussions about making that happen. In order for that to happen, it would have filled the funding gap and allowed for the overall project to come to fruition. However, they needed to reallocate the money and get approval from the state to to reallocate that money and use it off-site. We had discussion with them. They aren't going to be able to get an answer for that until late summer. So, staff decided to pivot, reached out to Danco to see whether or not they would be interested. And we've been having discussions with them and been working in conjunction with Danco, Humboldt Transit Authority, and the city to come up with a plan to move forward with the Earth Center. So, that leads us to here today. What we're looking to do is to adopt a resolution declaring the project exempt from SEQA. The two exemptions that we're using, one is consistency with our General Plan Environmental Impact Report. This project is very clearly consistent with the environmental impact report that we did for the General Plan. And the other exemption is for a infill exemption, which is allowable by SEQA. And then we have put together a disposition and development agreement. This is different than what the MOU was that we did with the previous rendition. This is a disposition development agreement, very similar to the disposition and development agreement that council approved for the Seventh and Myrtle property. It's very similar to that. The city does make money off the project. We get all hundred percent of the residual receipts from the project once it's up and running. The DDA is currently in draft form, and we are asking, it's being reviewed right now by Humboldt Transit Authority and Danco, and we're asking that you guys give me the authority to negotiate that disposition and development agreement and move it forward for this project. We have gotten permission. I know there's a lot of concerns about the looks and the design of the project. We've been, Danco and HTA, obviously HTA is very interested in this, very concerned as well, and wanting to make sure that we're consistent with what we were moving forward with previously. We did receive approval from Cal Poly, who paid for all of the architectural, preliminary architectural work and the feasibility study and all the numbers associated with the previous project, and they were willing to give us all that information. That information has gone over to Danco. We're in discussions with Danco and HTA currently, and setting up weekly or bi-weekly meetings to discuss design and finalizing at least the conceptual designs. And so we'll be moving forward with that. That will also have to go to design review as well. We'll try, you know, the intent will be try to be consistent with what we were previously designing, and if council would like, we could come back and bring back, you know, once those conceptual designs, before we go to design review, we can bring it back for council's consideration and further input as well. Currently, right now, the way that it's written so that we have flexibility is to not limit the number of units. We can go up to ninety-nine units. Right now, that's not what is being proposed, but there is a potential for that. Danco has expressed interest in doing similar to what we did before, is have mixed income levels in there. And so we didn't want to limit what could be done based on whatever comes out of the design process. I think that's all I have, and if there's any questions, I'm available. City Attorney Luna is available, Director Kenyon's available, and then also we have Executive Director of HTA, Greg Pratt, in the audience, as well as Chris Dart. I think he's the President of Danco here as well.
Are there any questions? Renee? Or Councilmember Contreras Deloge?
Can you help me understand the process? Why this didn't have to go out to everybody and have bidders on this again, since what we had before fell out, and now this is new? I'm trying to understand that.
So there's a lot of allowances for this. We've had discussions throughout our, this house, this current rendition of the housing element. As you're aware of, we have sole sourced other projects as well. We have sole sourced the rural communities project that's on Sunset Heights, that's a Pearson property. It's allowable in our measure, our implementation Measure H thirty-four. It basically states in there that at any point in time, a developer can come out and reach out to the city and do that. Yes, there was discussion in there about RFPs. It didn't limit us to that RFP. I think the reason why that was approved by the HCD, the Housing Community Development, was to ensure that we did develop these properties, but it's always allowed for an approvision. There's also Government Code section that allows for sole sourcing properties as well, so.
Thank you.
As long as they're for affordable housing. I should qualify that.
Other questions? Councilmember Castellano?
Sure. You know, last year, we had some conversation around a parking garage on a property in close proximity to the site that's selected for the Earth Center, you know, basically across the street. I know that isn't part of this specific development, but a lot of people have reached out, you know, just to trying to understand, and again, whether, you know, that that item is not on the agenda, so I'm not expressing an opinion of support or against that specific proposal, but I think it's it's worth asking just where that conversation is at in terms of planning and whether or not the city is still considering approaches to address parking needs. Were they to become necessary?
Yes, I think that, just to be specific to that, HTA has worked with HCOG, and HCOG is working on a feasibility study for a parking garage, likely in that location. We've had discussions with Danco. They feel that this project, especially with the Transit Center, could potentially have available funding for that as well. We'll also continue to push the, you know, with HTA and working on the microtransit and getting microtransit to go amongst the things. All of those things that were a part of the previous MOU and discussions about mitigations for parking concerns would would also be included in this project. Obviously, the new Transit Center will have more frequent trips in Arcata and other locations, but we would also be looking at microtransit to get folks around Old Town and and those type of things. I thought the thing that was really cool is that Greg, at one point, had brought, excuse me, Director Pratt had brought up the possibility of kind of like the, and this is a little out there, so just forgive me, but similar to the the scooters, there are communities out there that have pretty much scooters, but mini cars, where you roll up there and you put your credit card in there, and you hop in the little car and go to where you need to go. It's pretty cool. So all of those things will be considered. I don't know if Greg has money for that, but we'll push him for it.
This is just a, I was, you know, also, if folks haven't gotten a check, a chance to read the Director Kenyon's seventy-five page SEQA review, it's it's a thing of beauty, if if that's your jam. So I just highly recommend it. It really goes into a lot of detail. So thank you for that. In reading that, you know, there there's certain requirements for very low-income housing, low-income housing. Let's see, and I saw two different numbers, so I just was wanting a little clarity. Personally, both I support. One is, let's see, was forty percent affordable? And is that the same as low income? So like, basically, if someone's making forty-nine thousand five hundred dollars a year, that would qualify as affordable housing?
Yeah, it's based on the percentage of the median income. And so I believe sixty percent of the median income, and that's for a single person, I think you're referring to. And that would be low income, and a very low income is thirty percent of the median income. And I'm pretty sure, and Kristin, please chime in if I'm wrong, but I believe that the requirement from our regional housing needs allocation in our housing element is fifteen low income and five very low on each parcel. So that would be thirty low income and ten. Kristin, correct me if I'm wrong.
In the report, it says twenty very low and ten for for lower.
Okay, I have it mixed up then, sorry. That would be accurate then. But the discussions that we've had for Danco is the intent is to to definitely have more density than that and hopefully be able to provide mixed income levels in there as well, not just all affordable.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Thank you, Mayor. Similar, similar vein, so these would be deed restricted, and these would be rental units?
Correct, they'd be deed restricted rental units. I mean, there is a possibility for purchasing, but they would be deed restricted for fifty-five years, similar to all of our other projects.
Can you tell me a bit more about the the potential there for ownership?
I don't, we can do that. That's not the model that we've been discussing. If maybe Chris would, have you ever done any properties that have been for purchase, or has it all been rental? He has. So that that could be a discussion. It didn't seem like he was jumping all over that, but that could be a discussion.
But it's definitely something I feel worth discussing with this council, just because, you know, rental units are good for what they are. But again, that opportunity to build that generational wealth, that stability, especially in our community, in our community would be, I think, worth a discussion.
Yeah, and I think that, you know, we do still have other properties available as a part of this housing element, and we do have the ability to discuss that specifically for properties and maybe look into that. I think that that may be a good, right now, we're pretty far down the road. One of the reasons why we wanted to get this DDA in is that this project here will be very competitive for tax credits, and getting this DDA in place is one of the requirements in order to apply for those tax credits.
I'm not trying to throw a wrench into this.
Oh, no, no. But, you know, we, obviously, twenty twenty-seven, we're gonna have more, but we do still have other properties that we have C to F. I think that could be a discussion that we could have about other properties and potentially looking into a different model.
Thank you.
Anything further? Okay, so we will go ahead and open up the public hearing. Is anyone here to comment on this item? Hi, welcome.
Good evening. Good evening, Chris Dart, President, Danco Communities. Just grateful to be here again in the City of Eureka, discussing a wonderful project, another wonderful project in the downtown. We're excited to take this vision that's been worked on for, I didn't realize it was that many years, but for that many years, and take it from where it is and and work to bring that to reality. Although this project has been being discussed for many years, and, you know, we're just getting started. We've been in a couple of months now discussing this. You know, we believe that we are qualified to deliver this, to deliver this project and deliver the vision and and make it a reality. And we're, you know, we're we're open to the parking garage idea. We think that this project could potentially leverage funding to help with that. If it's tied to some of the affordable housing, that that would be something that we think could could happen. We know that this project means a lot to the city and a lot to HTA, and we take that very seriously. And we will, we will be, you know, as as the developer, if you vote on this, we would, we would be, you know, in close conversations with HTA, the City of Eureka, to make sure that all parties are satisfied with the outcomes. There's a, there will be a lot of intelligent people working on this. Met the group so far, and a lot of brain power that will be going into this and coming together that will happen over, you know, a long period of time, not too long though, but a longer period of time. We are, we're well-staffed, poised, and ready to get started. If you do vote tonight, we, you know, just, we appreciate your trust. We will work diligently to design, permit, finance, and construct this project. And as you know, that can, that can take some time, but we will work, we will put all of our efforts in, make make this a priority. And that's really all I got. If you have any specific things for me, I'm here. If you want, ask me now. Feel free.
Actually, we can wait till after public comment.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for being here. Hello and welcome.
Good evening, Thomas Stewart, Eureka. I'm here tonight to state publicly a loss. Unfortunately, here in the City of Eureka, there's been a death. It is so very sad. It's the death of common sense. It is sheer madness to take away vital infrastructure to merchants and businesses in Old Town. The employees of the businesses in Old Town need parking, too. Do you really want to create a ghost town in Old Town? Taking away essential parking lots is like taking away a bridge on a highway or closing an airport, right? Parking is essential to the City of Eureka and the towns in Humboldt County. Without a car, your level of transportation is limited. Try shopping on a bicycle. I've tried that. Pearson's, I can't take home what I wanted to take home at Pearson's. This is a form letter we received from Eureka Main Street dated until January 21st, 2022, and I quote, "This project, which describes as containing construction for lost parking space, this containing no consideration for lost parking spaces. The lot currently has 77 spaces and is, as it calls, a parking deficit that will significantly detrimental to the area. Decreasing the availability of parking will be disastrous for local businesses that are already struggling. We are concerned about the potential economic impact that this will have on the neighboring businesses and the district as a whole. There are needs, there are needs for all parking services, all sectors of business operation, and current Old Town residents." This picture was taken recently. It is last week. I can see that. Shows 77 parking places. The picture shows three parking lots, oh, wait a minute, sorry. Two cars looking for parking spaces. This picture shows three parking lots, as well as the one you plan to eliminate. They are at full capacity, at full capacity. Today, I surveyed the streets in Old Town for street park, and I found an average of a total of 14 spaces per city block, a street parking spaces, and four posts for bicycles. Walking around the entire block, I found seven vacant storefronts, seven vacant storefronts. Where are the new 99 residents and businesses of the new structure going to park their cars? Killing the ability to park your car is wrong, right? Do not make Old Town a ghost town. Killing the ability to park your car is just wrong, right? Thank you.
Thank you. Again, please limit your, thank you. I'm glad you're excited.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Kay Escarda, and I'm here to speak in favor of this project. I'm actually very excited about it. I know how long it takes to get any of these things going. We need housing so badly at all income levels, and we also need people downtown. That's what downtowns are made of, of people and businesses and activity. And I am so excited to see this going forward. I know it's been a long time coming. It's not there yet, but I'm here to say yay, let's go for it, let's get some housing down there, get people on the streets, get people who work downtown, living downtown. And I think it's going to be a big plus for Eureka. So I'm just here to say, go for it, make it happen. Let's do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Kay.
Honestly, Kay, you think?
So please don't badger people in the audience. Please don't badger people in the audience. Thank you. Be respectful.
If you guys had did your homework, of all the boys that had businesses back 30 years, 40 years, I, I'm drawing a blank on a few, but the Daleys Building, Wayne Wilson, he was sitting up here, and there's a few other people that were sitting up here, and they needed those park, parking spots. That's why it was put there. And I don't know what was ever underneath the parking lot, but for you guys to wave environmental impact for a project, and it's like you guys are God. What, let me get my notes, I've been going on too long. Earth Center, we are at the Native Sons Hall right across the street. That building was built in, say, 1887. It's been a pioneer hall. I think we bought it in 1907. We have a dinner a month, a business meeting a month. You should come down and see our view from our building, and we have a renter downstairs. And you can look at the parking lot like Mr. Stewart had showed you pictures of. You think, and then this project that you're putting together, how much off-street parking are you going to have for all these people? And you would honestly, what, go five stories or three? You would do this to Mrs. Grooms, who has the brewery? You would do this to John Winsler, who has leased buildings right next door to us? This skateboard shop? I wish Kelly Martin was here to voice his opinion. Pick another lot. And then I don't understand, what's, I don't know a few things that you got, no bid? It goes straight to Danco because he's did these? They're just going to line their pocket. Do you have out-of-town people that are, you're working with, or are they locals, you know, to design this Earth Center? The transit system, I was parked at Native Sons here. The two buses can't park where the bus stops are. I don't know if it's because that bus goes straight down Third Street farther, but they got their ass out in the street. They come by, clipped the front end of my truck, we're having a dinner, and, and you guys are thinking that people are going to rent these places, oh, and jump on the electric bus? You think a professor isn't going to drive his Porsche? Or a doctor, at one time, it's like, oh, doctors are going to rent the three-bedroom or the two-bedroom or, I don't know if my time's up, but if that project was to go through and get started, I hope it burns like the one down on the bay. You know what I mean? Because it's completely wrong. Park, what about Delta Mattress? Oh, they get to park across from the old bowling alley. Oh, here, stop by Mattress. Oh, two, nope, there ain't a parking spot, go around the block. Then you're parking the Winslers' other building where the engineers are.
Your three minutes are up. We appreciate you being here.
It is off the charts. You guys need to wake up.
Your three minutes are up. Again, your three minutes are up.
And scratch that.
Again, your three minutes are up. Thanks for being here.
How do you duck environmental impact report? Slattery and everything else.
So again, your three minutes are up. I'm going to ask you to sit down, please. Thank you for sitting down. Thank you for sitting down. Thank you for sitting down. Does anybody else in the audience care to comment on this item?
You have enough of three minutes?
You can sit down, friend.
Geez, crimin.
Do we have anybody on Zoom?
Althea?
Yeah, so I am really glad that some of the other commenters brought up Daleys Department Store, because, you know, they were founded in 1895, I believe it was. And if you look at the old maps, if you look at the old aerial photos, Daleys Department Store did not have any parking lots, and they thrived. If you read the Humboldt historian. You have Nada Gibson talking about how, you know, they used to take the streetcar down and Daleys would, you know, deliver their shopping home for them. They thrived. So again, I'm glad people brought that up, because again, you could look at the historic photos, you can look at all that stuff. You had Daleys Department Store, J.C. Penney, all these stores, all these businesses downtown with dramatically less parking than we have today, and they were thriving. I am sad to see that the very nicely-designed Earth Center that we'd been expecting, I guess that design is no longer on the table, but HTA and Danco and the city, you will be hearing from me about design options. I do, I want to raise a concern about, you know, potentially having parking garages underneath it, just because the, the actual financial cost of building those is so expensive. I didn't know how expensive it was until very recently, but, I mean, more than I make in a year to put in one parking space, you know, under a building. It also takes away ground-floor space for businesses, space for retail, space for fully wheelchair-accessible apartments that aren't dependent on an elevator. So I am pretty, pretty concerned about that, that loss of space and the, the cost of building these places. As for the mini cars Miles was talking about as a form of microtransit, I'm not in favor of that, you know, not everybody drives, not everybody is licensed as a driver. So, you know, that would still be inaccessible to a lot of people. I would like to suggest petty cabs instead. If you're not familiar with a petty cab, it's sort of like a little, almost like a rickshaw. You know, that would provide jobs for people who might not be able to work in some other industries, but, you know, they're able to pilot a bicycle, they're able to pilot a petty cab. That gets you door-to-door, you know, service in an environmentally friendly way, in a low-cost way. So I would like to suggest that instead.
Thank you, Althea, your time is up. Thanks for being here.
Colin?
Good evening, Colin Fisk with CRTP, the Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities. As you all know, CRTP has long been a big supporter of the Earth Center project. Eureka has needed for a long time a modern multimodal transit center. Obviously, also needs walkable and transit-accessible housing. And so in general, you know, this project is a great way to fill both of those needs. It's a little unfortunate that, you know, there have been so many delays so far, but we would encourage you to do whatever you need to, to move the project along, and really particularly encourage you to focus any resources available on providing that high-quality transit center and those affordable housing units, rather than, you know, any, as Althea said, extremely expensive extra parking spaces. I think, you know, the city's own studies show that there isn't a lack of parking. If anything, what there is is, is a lack of sufficient parking management, and strategies are known, and those can be implemented to more efficiently use the parking available. But this project really should focus all of the available resources on providing a high-quality transit center and as many affordable housing units on top of it as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Colin.
Philip?
Thank you. I'm very excited about this. I see it as a seed being planted for, for, for a way of living that isn't really available to people right now. And, but all that aside, folks have already talked about some great things. I, I just find it so surprising that we're worried about business when we're adding people to an area. I'm excited to see how downtown businesses adapt and to see businesses fill up with locations serving the needs of a population that lives in our Old Town. I'm excited that it will enhance security, I believe, by adding more eyes on our Old Town area. And I'm very excited for a sense of vibrancy and community that comes from more people being there when I go. Thank you.
Thank you, Philip. Do you see anyone else?
I see no one else.
Okay, so we will close this public hearing then and bring it back to council for comments. Councilmember Castellano?
Thanks. You could tell I was excited. First, I just want to say, I think I confused things by asking about parking at another location. There's no consideration that there would be parking garage included in this particular development. That would be a more, it's being considered for a property adjacent and is definitely by and far a very different conversation, but I just thought it may be useful for people to understand that conversations around kind of the larger context in which this development is taking place are definitely happening. And, you know, and as folks know who've been with us for a while, you know, these conversations take place kind of in little pockets here and there, and so sometimes it can be hard to, it can be easy to lose track of the more cohesive picture. I, I do serve on the Board of Directors for HTA, and so from that vantage point, I'm very excited to see this moving forward. You know, this has been part of a longtime goal for Humboldt Transit Authority to really centralize the, the resource of transit and, you know, and just make it more accessible. It also, oh.
I'm sorry, Mayor and Council, we had, we didn't ask if everyone had spoke on Zoom. We do have a hand raised. If we could.
Oh, pause.
Listen to that speaker?
Yes, I thought I did ask.
I, I think the hand, yes.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Patty?
Welcome.
Patty, you have your hand raised? She's still on. Patty, did you have public comment? Okay. You're muted.
For folks who are watching, we're trying to help a public commenter access public comment, and so I think, and thank you to city staff for, I think, madly trying to text this person and offer them as much opportunity as, as able to make public comment.
She apparently was having technical issues and rejoined the meeting the moment before public comment ended.
This is willing to go to any length, they say.
Hey, hold on a second. Kay, you're good.
Okay. Hey, I'm not having technical issues. I'm pushing your, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm not having technical issues. Anyway, there's a, there's a delay here.
Okay.
Her timer's going.
Your timer's going, Patty.
Well, okay. Yeah, thanks. That was really weird. I just want to bring it full, full circle and say to Athena, I don't think your comparisons of where we're at in today's world and where they were in downtown Eureka, or even comparing apples to apples, but whatever. It's interesting on, on my thoughts on these projects, but I, I go full circle. I think the big elephant in the room is, what are we going to do about keeping our community safe? So you might have 100 people down there living, how are you going to keep them safe? We went out to dinner tonight, and we were approached by a homeless man, crazy, batshit crazy, telling us to fuck off, he was going to kick our ass, put us in jail. We literally only had to walk probably 50 feet from Luis's restaurant to our car and just about got attacked. So as you travel down the road of all these pretty projects, I think you could do the young man a big favor that spoke tonight and make sure that the community he is speaking of and growing up in is kept safe. I think it's super important.
Is that it, Patty?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. Councilmember Castellano, do you remember where you were and your thoughts?
I'm sure I'll find my way. And thank you so much, City Manager Slattery, for really making sure that everyone who wanted to make public comment could. And thank you for everyone who has made comment tonight. And thank you for everyone who has made comment tonight. So I'll try to pick up my train of thought. No problem at all. So from my HTA standpoint, you know, I'm very excited to see this move forward and really bring greater accessibility, not only to the city of Eureka and people who live there, but also to the entire region as we really have been working to develop regional strategies for public transit. As someone who works in Old Town, has lived in Old Town, has had a small business in Old Town, I personally am thrilled. I do park in that parking lot and will gladly walk an extra couple of blocks or ride the bus or walk to work. You know, I live about a 15-minute walk away in order to ensure that people have access to housing. You know, most everyone I know who works in Old Town would qualify to live in this housing and is paying far more than 30% of their income for rent. So in terms of like my responsibility to the workforce of the city of Eureka, to the employees who work for the organization that I work for, I am thrilled to support this because in just a very, very quick survey of the people who, who actually work across the street from this, you know, of like, would you live in housing here in Eureka if given the chance to only pay 30% of your income? People were so excited at that opportunity. And so this is for almost, you know, the hundreds of people who are working in the service industry, in the nonprofit sector, in Old Town every day, that I will be excited to support this. Also, you know, the TERSIP grant that the HTA has does have a time signature on it. So I understand that there is some need to, you know, get this moving forward. We've been waiting a really long time and thank you to Director Pratt for your patience on this. You know, I know it's been a little stressful, you know, it's HTA and so I appreciate you continuing to want to partner with the city of Eureka on this. And, you know, and just to say, I had lunch with a dear friend of mine who lives in the senior housing that Dan Co built. I had lunch with her on Saturday and, oh my gosh, what a game changer being able to live in that housing has been for her and for her life to have that financial support, stability and to be in a beautiful, new, new place to live. Thank you. It's, it's made an amazing impact on her life. And I just want to say, you know, I think that it's proven that investing money in people who are lower income has a greater economic impact than any other kind of investment. So when we're talking about freeing up income that people are spending on rent that they won't make back, that they can't invest in the community, they can't invest and put towards housing, this, these are people who are most likely to reinvest that money that they're saving back into the community. And so I am thrilled for local businesses to have people who all of a sudden have potentially 20 to 30% more of their salary that they can save, they can spend, they can go out to eat in Old Town. I think it's going to make a big difference to have that many people who all of a sudden have like a little more money to spend, who've been like seeing like 50, 60% of their income they're making every month go just to paying rent. And so I could continue for all of the reasons I'm supporting this, but I'll stop there and let my other council members have a chance to speak.
Thank you. Councilmember Contra Stiloch?
Yeah, I also, you know, just kind of giving this a lot of thought. I mean, you know, this is in my ward, as are a lot of the projects. And, and I am very supportive of our businesses. And, and I, and I do acknowledge that, you know, placing housing there is going to place a strain on parking. I understand that. But I think we do, you know, of those two, I think, you know, when you're facing a situation where there's people who do not have places to live and we have a serious housing shortage here. And I'm not necessarily feeling that. I was able to purchase my home a few years ago. But I know other people that are feeling that, and we were when we were renting. And I, one of the things I want to share is I was talking with one of our fishermen two days ago. And fishing has been really impacted. And I was talking about some of the different plans for, you know, actually, we were talking about the gravel lot, the massive gravel lot. And I was saying, you know, maybe hopefully we'll see something like this or the other thing. And they, and they asked, well, you know, what's, so what, what do they think it's going to go there? And I said, low and very low, where, you know, we have this plan. And they said, that would be me. Like, I would, that would give me a place to be. And I, as I've gotten to know different community members, but specifically lately getting to know some of our fishermen and understanding some of the concerns that they have about different things, they're really hoping for housing options because they don't have them. And a lot of people are stuck in really subpar rentals that are not safe and not clean. And this would make a huge impact for a lot of people. I have sometimes mixed feelings about some of our subsidized housing because I believe that it exists in part because employers do not look out for their employees the way that they should, and they pass the bill for all of that onto the rest of society. And so I do have an issue with it from that perspective. But ultimately, the bottom line, it doesn't matter, is we have to kind of decide what we're going to do and how are we going to address that? And I think it's so critical that we find ways to provide housing for people who, who are contributing to our communities. They're a part of our communities. They deserve to have a place to live. And I think that it takes priority over, I'm willing to walk further. I have to travel a lot everywhere I go. I usually have to park my car in 10 buck, too. And I'm going to be walking very, very long distances. I'm going to be paying, you know, three or $4 at least to park. I was just in DC. I paid $21 to park. So there, we still have a much easier situation here. I'm willing to walk seven or eight blocks if it means that there are people here that get to live in a clean apartment. Those are kind of my feelings on that.
Councilmember Bauer?
I appreciate both Councilmember Castellano and Contra Stiloch's comments. They're, they're very eloquent and you said it all. I'm looking at page three of the CEQA review document and there's a picture from 1947 of Old Town. And what you'll notice, and I'm not to be flippant or anything, but there was no parking lots. You know, and, and the community, it worked. Community made it work because there were thriving businesses and there were people living down there. And we made it work. And so that's what I think we're doing here, is we're trying to make it work. We need housing more than anything. And if we have to be, some of us have to be a little bit inconvenienced by having to walk further or something, you know, I'm willing to do that, like, like you were saying. Because the number one thing across America is a lack of housing. And so we have to do better and we have to sacrifice, and that's the hardest part. As a community that we have to, we have to, there's shared sacrifice when it comes to providing for our community members and giving others the opportunity that a lot of us have, have a house, have a, have a place to stay. So this is what we have to do. And I know people will, will be upset by it, but, you know, this is the most critical thing that we have in our community, the most critical need. And so I hope we can do this with, with all speed and alacrity. Thank you.
Councilmember Moulton?
Thank you very much and thank you for the information, City Manager Slattery, and for the detailed, for the, they did a lovely report. I especially liked page 71, which is the definition of terms and acronyms. We get lost in alphabet soup a lot of times. That's always very helpful. I'm going to post that one on my wall. So we have a responsibility to use the public resources for the public good and what we think is going to be the best public good for our community. When the lots were built, that good meant let's get some people to finally come to the businesses in Old Town. It meant let's get this brand-new, awesome thing that everybody has, a car, and give them a place to put it. And times change and needs change. And I love what some folks are saying about downtown is made of activity. It's made of people. I run a business in Old Town. My regulars are the residents. I, I, I feel the most secure and safe walking around anywhere when there's more people around. And I look forward to a time when all of the businesses in Old Town have additional hundreds of customers within a stone's throw. I look forward to when a grocery store sees that another grocery store, a small maybe convenience store wants to open up down there. There's so many possibilities. And, you know, despite some of the, or despite some storefronts looking empty, it's actually quite, quite packed down there on the retail front, on the ground level. I think, you know, above all though, I think that at this point in this town, right now, choosing an underutilized parking lot over affordable housing, when people are sleeping on the streets, when families are living in their cars, when I have students whose families are living, two and three families to a house, because even if they could afford it, they can't find housing. There's just not available. And choosing an additional parking space so that there's a little, so people can walk a little bit less in our vibrant and beautiful Old Town, just seems inhumane. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Fernandez?
Just going back briefly to the CEQA exemption. This is, this is written within CEQA that we can exempt this based on the general plan, based on the needs that we see within this community. And I don't need to touch on the points that have already been touched on regarding the need for housing here, regarding the need to, to house the homeless population that we have. But if the concern is about disability access or safety, then, then yeah, we likely need to review our disability access as it relates to transit, as it relates to parking currently in Old Town on our public spaces. But also going to the point of, I think, Councilmember Moulton, you kind of hit on it there with regards to when we have the increased population that we do down there, whether it's from just the activities of Friday Night Market or Arts Alive or Fourth of July, generally people are feeling safer down there because there's more observation. There's more relation to each other at that point. And to have this type of project in that central location, I think there's more of that passive ownership of people wanting to feel safe in their community. I'd like there to be more general ownership, but that's a later conversation that we'll have. But it, it also goes back to, I think, what was already touched on by another council member, which is that we have an opportunity here to at least address some of the issues around housing. Granted, the parking's going to be inconvenient. It's going to be impacted. But we can solve that through any number of means that have already been touched on. And unless there's anyone else willing to speak, I'd like to make the motion to approve this resolution.
Would you?
Yeah. I always have trouble with this in my. Unless Leslie would like to, because it sounds like you already have it lined up.
Sure, I got it lined up. I would love to make a motion on this thing. I'm making a motion to hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution finding the project exempt from CEQA and authorizing the city manager to enter into a disposition and development agreement, DDA, with Danko Communities for Development of the Earth Center.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion second. Please vote.
Unanimous yes vote. Motion carries.
Okay, that takes us to, what do I do with my glasses? There they are. That takes us to the consent calendar. All matters listed under this category are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion pursuant to City Council Resolution 2011-22. If a member of the public would like an item on the consent calendar pulled and discussed separately, the request shall be made to a council member prior to the meeting. Unless a specific request is made by a council member, the consent calendar will not be read. There will be no separate discussion of these items. So my understanding is, I haven't heard anybody want to pull anything? No, good. So can we get a motion?
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Second?
Please.
Aunt me.
The motion is second. Please vote.
Unanimous yes vote. Motion carries.
Great. So legislative action correspondence, do we have any? Councilmember Bauer?
And I already talked about it with our attorney. There's a companion bill for the one that was on the consent calendar in the Senate, and I forget the number right now, but I think we need to also support that since it's the exact same bill, just in the other chamber.
Okay. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that moves us to ordinances and resolutions. And up next is a resolution calling for ceasefire in the Israel-Palestine conflict. City Attorney Luna?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is the second time that this, that a version of this resolution has been before the council. The earlier version that was brought to the council after quite lengthy discussion did not, did not garner the, the motion and second that it needed to move forward to a vote. And so we've been.
Can I offer a correction? We pulled it. There was no action taken. Yeah.
I thank you very much for offering that correction. I appreciate it. After further action by some local agencies, this has been put back on in a version that is very similar to the, the versions that have been discussed and passed by both Arcata and the County of Del Norte. And so it is here before you for discussion and adoption if the councils.
County of Humboldt or Del Norte?
Oh, my goodness.
Te, Del Norte.
I'm harkening back to a job I had three years ago. How, how odd. Thank you again for that correction. I'm going to stop speaking now and, and let you guys take over. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for City Attorney Luna? Councilmember Fernandez?
You had referenced that this had, or the similar resolution had been passed at various other municipalities and at the county level. Are there any significant deviations from those? Just insert Eureka?
Basically just insert Eureka, yes. I did, you know, look this over and I'm not saying that there weren't a few other very minor changes, but nothing of substance was, was modified.
Thank you.
Other questions? No. Okay, so seeing no other questions, we'll open this up for public comment. Would you care to speak? Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak on this tonight. My name is Micah Starr. And I, I have to say, I come up to you with a lot of emotions. First and foremost gratitude that, particularly for Councilmember Castellano for bringing this matter back to the agenda and for all of you for taking the time to reconsider. I'm also feeling so much pain, as I'm sure we all are. And I just wanted to take a moment to ask, I mean, raise your hand if you feel comfortable, but like, has anyone here ever directly lived through active war? Okay, I didn't know if maybe we had veterans in attendance earlier. But, forgive me. We are incapable of imagining the level of suffering, destruction and loss of human life that has occurred since October in Palestine and for so, so long. The roots of this conflict aren't October 7th of 2023. They're not 1967, not 1945, not even 1918. It's so, so further back. The conflict over who gets to live in this land is so old. But we're in a moment now. And I feel anger. I want to ask, why did we wait? Why did we push this conversation until later when we could have acted to pass a ceasefire resolution? You know, I can talk about the specifics of the resolutions, but I do, did want to note and appreciate that the current resolution includes respect for international law, which would mean the US pausing support for Israel and for many arrests. which would mean the US, um, pausing support for Israel and, uh, for many arrests to be made. I'll just leave it at that. Um, but I, I did want to say thank you for considering this again, and, um, I wanted to invite the community also to an event. Uh, it's an art exhibit, memorial and, um, cultural event called Birds for Palestine, in which community members have made art on birds honoring the deaths of Palestinian children. Uh, it's on June 15th from 2 to 5 p.m., 1928 Old Arcata Road in Bayside. Um, and it's never too late to take action, whether it's here or in our own personal lives. So, thank you.
Thank you, Micah. Shannon, you have your hand raised?
Hi there. I wanted to thank you for putting this on the agenda, and I hope you pass it. Um, I really second the sentiments shared by the previous speaker. Um, I'm just, I, there are no words to describe what we are doing. We, I say this because this is our, this is our money, our tax money going to slaughter babies, elderly, disabled women, to ruin water wells, to specifically target hospitals where people are getting care for terminal and acute illnesses, to destroy, uh, virtually every single aspect of the environment. Um, this is a watershed moment in our time that we are living through, witnessing, you know, we were lucky not to live through it as in being there, but we're watching it with this guilt that we are all taking in. We all are gonna be hearing, feeling this collective guilt. Um, and then all the things that you guys are talking about and dealing with, it touches on this. You know, uh, the housing crisis. What the heck are we doing? Bombing people's homes on another side of the planet right now? We can't even house our own people, and we're spending our taxpayer dollars doing that. It's, makes no sense at all, making more refugees, making more immigrants to destabilize other regions. I mean, this is absolutely insane. So I just appreciate Leslie Castellano bringing this back, and I appreciate the council to be open to this. I know people are scared to talk about this because we get, uh, we get attacked. Personally, I've been personally attacked for speaking out against what is so obviously wrong that I can witness with my own eyes and feel it with my own heart, and I have a spine still to say something about it. And I think that we are moving towards, hopefully, uh, this is a reckoning that Americans will have. You know, the, the young man that spoke about Martin Luther King and nonviolence, hopefully his generation will, uh, will, will be the beacon of light to move us away from perpetual war, which is what America has been doing for the last over half century. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. Do you see anyone else, Shannon?
Is there any, anyone else on Zoom that would like to comment? I see no one else.
Okay, so we'll bring it back to council for comments and a motion. Any comments? Any motion? Good. Councilmember Moulton?
I just wanted to make comment. I also want to thank, um, Councilmember Castellano for bringing this back up. I know that, um, when we're speaking for, um, the whole council, especially when we're speaking for the city, uh, that it's important that we get the words really right. And it, I do think, even though there was a delay, that it was worth, it was worth going back and making sure we were really saying what we really wanted to say. Um, and, uh, I just wanted to take this moment to reach out to the people in our community who are suffering. I know that this has impacted people, uh, directly, uh, folks getting, um, friends of mine, you know, receiving threats and, uh, awful comments, and that this, uh, has reached into, into our little city. And I wanted to, just express support for them, um, that a nonviolent resolution and nonviolent ways of living, um, start at home. But I'll let, you let me make the motion.
Councilmember Castellano. Oh, I thought your hand, your hand wasn't raised.
Sure, I'm sorry. Um, I, I also want to thank, uh, Councilmember Fernandez for, you know, expressing a lot of leadership, um, on this issue, uh, or this item earlier. Um, yeah, I just appreciate that, um, there isn't, you know, any one person who's, um, the bastion of peace or that, you know, and, and that it's something that we, I mean, for me, being in a practice of peace and, and care for community is a, a learning and growing process, and I certainly couldn't do it without, um, the conversations that I've had from the, from the public and the people who have come to us as well as other council members. And I just want to say I also, you know, re- respect disagreement, respect, uh, challenges around this, um, item and, uh, you know, and, and want to own my own, uh, yeah, just my own questions, you know, as we've been working on this and bringing it forward, that, um, you know, we, we, we make the road by walking, I think is, uh, a version of that, you know, and, and that, um, though, you know, that we've received some critique that, you know, perhaps like, the city of Eureka doesn't have anything to do with international conflict or things like that, but I do think, um, the city of Eureka, you know, we're, we're a global community now, and I think it's part of the role we have is to, you know, there, there aren't great opportunities for discourse around these deeply entrenched and complicated challenges. And so, you know, we, we bring it here and that, um, I just want to appreciate continuing to be in a community that learns and tries and tries to say something and tries to express our values. And I do deeply value, like, changing the world, you know, and, and maybe that's happening here, you know, in small ways with the work we're doing, you know, with the, the work our police force is doing and partnering with social services, you know, and, and that, those kinds of steps are what we're, we're doing here. Um, and that, you know, we're engaging in ways of saying that, you know, these systems that are based on deep inequities are not serving us, um, as humans, and so, you know, let's keep working together towards peace. So, uh, with that, uh, I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution of the city council of the city of Eureka calling for ceasefire in the Israel-Palestine conflict.
Second.
Okay, we have first and second. Uh, Councilmember Conchares Deloche?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on this briefly. Um, I appreciate, um, our Attorney Luna for, um, I know you were using what had already been written, but I just, uh, I'm appreciative, um, I would not, what came before us in December, the emails that we received, I read all of them, the three and four page, uh, proposals, I would never have been in favor of, and I would have adamantly spoken against because of the language that was in, in those. Um, and, uh, and, and so for myself personally, that's why, that, that's why, no, um, back in December. And, um, uh, because I wasn't willing to take a position on those things. Um, so, you know, with this now, you know, reading this, um, you know, I'm appreciative of the neutral language, and I, there was something that I, you know, I've thought about this a lot and thought about kind of where people are at, but there was this, um, quote by Krishnamurti, "It's no measure of health to be well adjusted to a profoundly sick society." And I was thinking about just how, um, that all of us watching this, I think people have, you know, taken different sides, but, um, on different things. Um, but ultimately, I would hope that the side would be humanity and a care and concern for all human beings. Um, and so I appreciate where this resolution is now, because that's what it's speaking to. And it's, um, you know, we're not going to affect it. Um, this resolution is not going to affect it. Um, but I'm appreciative, um, that we've found a way to say that we don't support these things and that this is a sign of a world sickness, and it's a terribly devastating thing, so.
Councilmember Bauer?
I just want to point out two things in the resolution, that we reject violence and we embrace peace. Who could be against that? I mean, that's, that's the simplest way to live. Um, war is abhorrent, and it needs to end. And if, if this resolution, uh, leads towards that path, then who can't support that? So, I, I'm, uh, I'm happy this is back, and I'm, I'm glad we're taking care of it here today. Thank you.
Thank you. And I too would like to make a comment. If that's okay? I don't get to vote, but I can make a comment. Um, so when this first came about, um, I too, I, I thought that it was very lengthy and that really, you know, it really wouldn't make an impact on a worldview. Um, and that was my thoughts. And I also didn't like seeing everything that was going on in our own city and in our own region behind all this. Um, I was reading the other day, well, not the other day, it's been a while now, I've been at home, so I've been having lots of time to read, and I was reminded by one of my heroes, who was spoke about tonight, Martin Luther King, that our lives begin to end the day we become silent about things that matter. And that, that really struck me because, you know, maybe, maybe this resolution, maybe it won't make a difference in the world, but I really believe strongly that it will make a difference in our community, because we are embracing something that is true, honest, and real. Um, you know, my kids went to a Montessori peace school, so we've always been a big proponent of looking at ways to have nonviolent communication and to, to mitigate things without having to have violence or screaming or yelling. And I think that's sometimes why public comment can be such an issue for me, when people are yelling and creating all this drama, when it really has, has nothing to do with, it's, it's not helpful. Um, but I digress. So what I want to say is that I'm really appreciative that we, that, that we have this very simple language. You know, one of the things that came up for me is, what about Ukraine? What about all these places that we're involved in that are creating these similar situations? What about, you know, why not add them all? And it, you know, I, in my heart, I think that I will add them all, I, personally, but in here I can see the, the need for this, this singular path. So, um, I hope that through passing this resolution, if it passes, that, um, it will begin to heal again, heal our community, uh, and help us to work together in more, um, appropriate ways instead of the divisiveness, divisiveness that's been happening, because that's how we grow. You know, working through divisiveness, we can, we can grow and become better people, uh, together. So, um, with that, there's a motion and a second, right? And where's a comment from Mario? I mean, Councilmember Fernandez?
Uh, I, I think everyone here's already succinctly said what I would say, so I think I've been outspoken in the public enough that I don't need to reiterate anything.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't realize that you didn't call in yet. I just spoke up right before you. All right, we have a second and a motion, motion and a second, please vote.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
And with that, we're gonna take a seven-minute break. We will resume the council meeting with reports and action items. Director Millar, proposed budget introduction.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council.
Good morning.
Tonight's report is on the fiscal year 2425 proposed budget. Uh, you can tell it's a budget item because there's a giant crowd behind me. So, uh, we'll begin by looking at the current fiscal year. There's a few things I want to touch on that will help us understand where we're headed. Uh, the next section is a overview of the 2425 proposed budget by type, so I won't be talking about departments tonight, I'll be talking about budget categories. And then finally, we'll talk about the budget study session. Um, this is a subsequent meeting that happens after the budget is introduced. So to begin with where we are today and how that's gonna impact the future, uh, we're gonna look at the general fund, and we're gonna start with general, general fund revenues. Uh, so here's the 2324 adopted budget as a pie chart. Uh, this pie chart represents about forty-one and a half million in revenues. Uh, you'll notice that the largest slice of that pie is the category of taxes. Uh, the city has a number of different tax types. Uh, you'll notice that there are property tax, TOT or bed tax, and other, other includes things like business license tax. Uh, these are substantial amounts of revenue, uh, but they don't typically change very much from year to year. Uh, property tax, uh, it really never goes down, but it doesn't grow at a high rate. Uh, TOT has been pretty flat for the past couple fiscal years. Um, it's consistent, but again, I don't expect mu- much growth in this category unless we were to assume, uh, a new, uh, hotel operation. Uh, the biggest, um, type of tax that we receive is sales tax, so about $27 million in, uh, fiscal year 2324. So going back in time, um, you can see that back in fiscal year 2021, we had, uh, that yellow box, that was Measure Q. Measure Q was a half-cent, uh, sales tax. Uh, it was replaced by Measure H, uh, a one and a quarter cent sales tax. Uh, Measure H essentially provided the general fund with about seven and a half additional or million dollars in addition to what was there before. Uh, unfortunately, since fiscal year 2122, our sales tax revenues have been relatively flat, if not down. Uh, just recently, I received an update from HDL companies, uh, we use a outside firm to help us forecast sales tax revenues. Uh, they indicated that, uh, revenues in this fiscal year were even, or were down even further from what they had estimated. And if you compare that to fiscal year 2122, we're down about a million dollars in sales tax revenues. Uh, looking at the other side of the equation, uh, we're gonna look at expenditures. So these are expenditures represented as a pie graph. Um, in the current fiscal year, we adopted a budget of about forty-one and a half million in expenditures, so essentially a balanced budget. I want to look at three different categories of this pie chart, uh, starting with personnel. We know what this represents. This, this is the pay and the benefits that we provide to, uh, city employees. Uh, but I also want to note that in this category, outside services, uh, the majority of that is what we provide to Humboldt Bay Fire, uh, about seventy-five percent of that piece of pie, and their budget of about 6.9 million, uh, is about ninety percent salaries and benefits. And then when we look at this slice of pie, cost allocation, uh, this is where charges such as finance or IT or the city manager's office, uh, those are cost centers, and those get allocated out to the different funds and different departments, and they show up under the cost allocation category. Uh, if I were to look at this category and separate the personnel costs from the non-personnel cost, uh, you would find that about forty-two percent of that slice of pie is also salaries and benefits. So in conclusion, uh, to show you another pie graph with the same data, but to separate personnel costs versus non-personnel costs, about sixty-nine percent of all dollars spent in the general fund have to do with salaries and benefits. Uh, why I point this out is because of what has happened this fiscal year in terms of labor agri- Why I point this out is because of what has happened this fiscal year in terms of labor agreements. So the city has three employee groups, the E P O A, the E C E A and a group of unrepresented employees. All three groups are going to begin new contracts starting in July. These contracts will last three years. All staff in every group will receive colas at the beginning of every fiscal year. This July, staff will see the largest increase. On top of that, most staff will receive additional longevity increases. So to summarize where we're headed based on what's happening now, I think I just want. People to walk away with two main ideas. The first one is that sales tax revenues are underperforming forecasts. Sales tax revenues tend to work in, or tend to show trends. So things don't go up and down every fiscal year, they tend to take a downward projection and. That might continue for a couple of years until it turns around. So that's something that we should expect based on how H D L has been forecasting our sales tax revenues recently. And then the other side of the equation shows that our salaries and benefits, the biggest slice of pie. Are increasing and they will continue to increase. This presents a challenge, it's not a crisis, but it's something to keep in mind and something to remember. When we're looking what's happening or what's. Projected to happen next fiscal year. Alright, so the twenty four, twenty five proposed budget. So we're going to look at the major funds. We have one major governmental fund, that's the general fund, our main operating fund. We also have a number of enterprise funds. These operate differently than the general fund. The water fund is in charge of delivering water to our utility customers. The wastewater fund is in charge of treating that water. When we receive revenue for water. It must go back into that fund. When we get revenue for sewer or wastewater, it goes back into fund five ten. Same thing with the harbor fund and the building fund. When we do a building permit, it goes back into that fund. They're more self-sustainable. In the sense that. They are charging for a service and that service is going back into the system to support that system. In addition to these governmental and enterprise funds, we have what's called an internal service fund. We have a series of funds or cost centers that are essentially overhead. We have equipment operations, that's the city's vehicle fleet. We have risk management, so we pay for liability insurance and workers' comp insurance. Those get allocated out to the other funds. I T, government and admin, so that's the council, the city manager, city attorney, H R, finance and economic development. And then facilities. The way these funds work is that they, we figure out a way on how to allocate out those charges, whether it's number of computers. Number of F T Es or the size of the budget. And their revenue comes from these other funds. So essentially. The flow of money is going in that direction. In addition, some of these funds charge each other, so. Facilities and equipment operations, they use computers, so a piece of I T is actually allocated out horizontally. So to begin, we're going to look at the internal service funds and we're going to look at expenses because. Revenues are essentially just reimbursements through those cost allocation accounts. So beginning with equipment operations, we're going to look at types of expenses. Personnel is going up by about nine point two percent. This is a reoccurring theme. You know, as we increase salaries. You'll see that in the budget and you'll see that across all funds and all departments. Same thing with, or I'm sorry, cost allocation as well. Cost allocation in general is going up at a higher rate than most funds. But it's also, there's additional pressure from the increases in salaries and benefits. Outside services in this fund are going up due to increases in our contract with enterprise. For leasing vehicles. As well as an increase to budgets that help us outfit our vehicles. Capital outlay is going up. For additional vehicle purchases. And overall, this fund is poised to grow about seven point three percent. The next fund is risk management. So there's only one category in this fund. Essentially, all the monies that come out of this fund are going to pay for insurance products. Unfortunately, our liability insurance is going up. By about twelve point seven percent, so overall the fund is going up about, by about twelve point seven percent. Next, we have I T. I Ts. Seeing increases in personnel. Some increases due to software costs. As well as for cost allocation. Government and admin. So if you notice personnel costs are going up by thirty percent, which is above average. That is because when we compared to fiscal year twenty three, twenty four, we've added. And are proposing to add about three point seven F T E or full-time positions. That in addition to the increase in salaries and benefits is creating a higher than average growth rate. Cost allocation is about, about average. And then finally, we have facilities. So facilities is going up pretty much in every category. Not substantially, but based on their size of budget. Things are increasing by about fourteen percent on average. Next, we'll look at the enterprise funds. So starting with the water fund. So the water fund has this one category, charges for services. So when we send out water bills and people pay their water bills, it comes through in this category. Unfortunately, we probably overprojected for fiscal year twenty three, twenty four. So we're expecting a slight increase in the twenty four, twenty five budget. Water rates will go up in July, so there is, we do expect revenues to be higher next year than they are this year. When we're looking at expenses, again, personnel is going up. Materials and supplies are going up due to increases in the cost of the wholesale water. As well as increases to water meters and water meter parts. Outside services are going up due to increases in merchant card fees, so when you use a Visa card, whether that's online or. On the first floor, we have to pay the credit card processor. Those fees have become more and more substantial because more and more people are using the online system as well as paying with card. We're also seeing increases to electricity. Again, increases to the cost allocation. And then transfers in this category. What that shows is our money is being transferred to the water C I P fund to pay for water projects. The past couple fiscal years, we've spent above or. Larger than normal amounts on water projects, so next year. What is showing is a decrease even though that's, that was expected. So overall, in the current fiscal year, we showed a small budget surplus. And we expect another budget surplus in the water fund for fiscal year twenty four, twenty five. Next, we have the wastewater fund. So just like the water fund, your wastewater or your utility bills go back into this fund. It is showing a substantial increase in revenues. It's somewhat misleading, a lot of that revenue is coming from the sewer lateral and luffies. This is really a timing difference. We collect those fees as real estate transactions happen or as remodels happen. That's going to go into the fund balance or reserves. And be used for future sewer lateral replacements that occur in the cities right away. On the expense side. We expect it increases to personnel. Outside services are going up. Due to charges for electricity, merchant card fees as well as lab testing. Cost allocation up. And then transfers for wastewater projects is going down, but we still expect to spend a substantial amount of money on wastewater. C I P projects. Overall. We expect a surplus of about a million dollars in the wastewater fund next year. Next, we have the harbor fund. So the harbor fund is. Expecting an increase for charges for services. The harbor fund controls a lot of properties on the waterfront and we have leases. Every year we look at those leases and we apply a C P I increase. And due to the high rates of inflation, those lease or rent amounts have gone up quite a bit. And then we do subsidize the harbor fund, so monies from the general fund go over to help the harbor fund. We are increasing that subsidy by about forty three thousand dollars to make sure that this fund stays balanced. On the expense side. We've added personnel into this fund, so it's growing higher. Or the growth rate is higher than normal. And because it's a relatively small personnel budget, sometimes when you add personnel, those growth rates are. Kind of exaggerated based on the relatively small budget. Cost allocation is going up quite a bit as well. That's mainly because when you increase F T Es in a fund, the cost allocation charges are going to follow. Because a lot of expenses in those internal service funds are based on F T Es.
And sorry to interrupt Director Millar, but I'm sure some of council, F T is a full-time equivalent position.
So in the current fiscal year, we showed a balanced budget and next fiscal year, there's a slight deficit, but. Mostly a balanced budget. And finally, the building fund. So the building fund has been doing really well in terms of permit fees. There's enough history that I'm comfortable raising the budget or the estimated revenue level. That's a good thing because what it's done, it's essentially eliminated the need for a subsidy from the general fund. So it's become more self-sustainable. On the expenditure side, we're showing increases to personnel and cost allocation. And a small dollar amount to materials and supplies, which translates to a fairly high rate of change. Overall, balanced budget this year and essentially a balanced budget is expected next fiscal year. So last but not least, the general fund. So I've done more pie charts, this time it's with the twenty four, twenty five proposed budget. You might notice that the, the taxes slice of pie is slightly down. That's because there's a couple other categories that are growing. And relative to the tax revenue, they're taking more of the share. So to begin at the top, unfortunately, tax revenue overall is expected to drop by less than one percent. So and to show you that graph again, that I showed earlier on in the presentation. I would call sales tax revenue flat, but technically it is slightly down. Intergovernmental, so this category is where we collect monies or reimbursements from grants. We expect a large increase in this category mainly due to our programs with uplift and care. They've been very successful in acquiring grant monies and we expect that to continue. And charges for services, that large increase is mainly due to operations at the zoo. They have, or there's been pleasant surprises from zoo revenues. They continue to exceed estimates and continue to break records. So I'm comfortable increasing our revenue estimates because we have enough history to support. That level of revenue. In the miscellaneous category, I've included some monies for, or received from interest. The city with. The reserve levels at where, where they're at, I've been able to put the money into treasury bonds. Those bonds are. Bringing in between four and five percent currently. So I'm expecting about a quarter million dollars of interest revenue next fiscal year. That's assuming that rates stay at where they're at today through the end of the calendar year. If they stay throughout the fiscal year, then that revenue would likely double. Again, here's a pie chart with expenditures. So the personnel slice increased and as well as the cost allocation slice. Personnel costs are expected to go up by just under nine percent in the general fund. This miscellaneous category is going down by quite a bit. We are shifting gears with our marketing efforts rather than spending a substantial amount outs, or for outside services. Those monies are being redirected for personnel and for other communication efforts. The cost allocation is going up. And then debt service is going up. We're about to receive our new ladder truck. The city is responsible for the facilities and the equipment of the fire J P A. So this lease payment is ours. And then finally, transfers, so what this represents are monies that we spend on street projects, on facilities and on subsidies. So next fiscal year, we will continue to spend about two point five million dollars on street projects. We're spending a little bit less on facilities, about five hundred thousand versus the eight hundred and seventy five thousand we're spending this year. And then there was also a reduction in the amount of subsidies going to other funds. So overall. Unfortunately, what we're showing is a deficit of about one point one million next fiscal year. That is something we need to pay attention to and to come up with a plan to manage it if it gets worse. Or if we expect more deficits in the future. But because we've been. So disciplined the past few years with measure H. We've actually put ourselves in one of the best financial positions that we've seen on the past decade. So if you go back about ten years, you can see that. The general fund reserve or fund balance back in fiscal year thirteen, fourteen was about two million dollars. Or about seven percent of what we spend. Over the course of the next couple of years, it went up to about twenty percent. Of general fund expenditures or about five million dollars or five and a half million dollars. And then due to COVID, a couple revenue streams really took a dive and we went through a lot of our fund balance. And went down to about nine percent of expenditures. And then quickly. Went back up and added about eight point five million dollars between fiscal year nineteen, twenty and fiscal year twenty two, twenty three. Last year I brought some budget policies. One of those policies was a fund balance policy. That stated that we should maintain a percent of expenditures of about twenty five percent or four months. So at the end of this fiscal year, we expect to, to exceed that policy level of about, and be at about twenty six percent. With that deficit, there is a chance that we go below. With that deficit, there is a chance that we go below policy. So as budgeted, I would expect fund balance to shrink to about ten million or about twenty-three percent of expenditures. This would put us out of compliance. If at the end of next fiscal year, we had a balanced budget, we would still be at the policy level, but it would shrink relative to the size of the expenditures. We could even have a slight deficit next fiscal year and maintain our policy levels. So at this point, what I would expect is that at the mid-year budget or twenty-four, twenty-five mid-year, that depending on how we're doing six months in, that we either keep on with the current plan or if things are not looking very good, that I will come back with a plan to help us navigate, you know, reducing our fund balance even further. Again, I don't think this is a crisis. It's not unusual for the general fund to show a surplus or a deficit mainly due to our, you know, sales tax revenues. Sales tax goes up and down, that's just how it works. So sometimes the budget's going to be a little healthier than other times. So on to the last section, the budget study session. What will be presented at the budget study session? I'll start with Measure H expenditures. And then we will go over departmental budgets and we will have representatives from each department here to talk about their budget. We're hoping that this can happen next Tuesday, the eleventh at five PM. And one last thing, so if you go to the city's webpage. Might have to share. And you go under my government, we have a link to the proposed budget. So if you follow that link, you'll have a number of different options. So last year, we acquired a new software product through ClearGov. We're currently building out what is called a digital budget book. So as we proceed through the month and as we get to budget adoption, you will see additional features of this webpage, but currently it does show you budgets by department and division. So you can look at all city departments and you can drill down into different divisions within those departments. You can print this out. We've decided to do that for you and add the PDF, so that's available on that same page. You can see an FTE or a full-time equivalent summary. This shows you changes to personnel by department. And then if you really like budgets, I do have this line item budget. I like it, but most people don't, so. And if anyone would like to request a hard copy, please just email myself and we'll get you a hard copy of the budget. It will grow over the next couple of weeks, so you might want to wait, but please try out our new budget tool. That is it.
Thank you. So we're receiving a report, but does anybody have any quick questions? Councilmember Moulton?
I don't have a question, I just wanted to comment. I was going to make fun of you for the pedantic. But I just wanted to say, sing the praises of that transparency tool. You know, being able to easily access that information in kind of organized in multiple different ways answer a lot of questions for people, so I'm really glad that was able to be implemented. Thank you.
Councilmember Castellano?
Are we giving questions and comments now?
Yeah, no, you're fine. We're just, we're just receiving a report, so say what you need.
Cool, that's what I thought, I just was trying to, okay, I have a few comments and maybe some questions. Thank you. Let's see. I just wouldn't, yeah, I really appreciate your work. I just want to express like one concern I have. I'm really appreciative of how much we're valuing our employees and I just want to, you know, there. I feel like we can't, I guess, and I don't think we're necessarily trying to do this, but, you know, like this, I just want to express caution or concern in solving our budget challenges by increasing fees just because there are a lot of people, you know, in the community that, and I don't think this is reflective of that, but just to say like as we move forward and, you know, and looking at future years, like if there are continuing to be budget challenges. You know, I, I want to caution against increasing fees to solve our budget challenges. Partially because I just think that there are some people who are doing really well in our community and some people that just means they're going to have less access to resources, less access to using, you know, city services and things like that. I was like, is Miles going to say?
I was just going to say that, you know, fees are cost recovery and that's how we usually try and keep them that way. And from a balanced budget standpoint, as you can see from the presentation, our fees don't make up a big portion of our revenue.
Great, thank you for alleviating those concerns. And then I was curious in terms of, you know, I know we have some, like a big emergency operations center that we're working towards, does this create, you know, which, again, the actual cost is a little yet unknown, but how does this affect our capacity to prepare for that?
So since we started receiving Measure H revenues, we've set aside a substantial amount for facilities and that is embedded in the budget currently. So at some point, we expect that to be translated into the cost of that operations center. And then on top of that, there's likely three funds that will bear the majority of the cost of the operations center. That includes the general fund, obviously, but also water and wastewater. Those are the three main operations that utilize or will utilize the new operations center.
Great. And do you think there's any capacity, like while we save money for the operations center to invest that money in bonds or anything that we could yield some small interest that would go towards paying for it or?
Yeah, essentially, all unspent monies right now are being put to work through treasury bonds.
Okay, great.
Yeah, so anything we don't spend, it's being put into these investment vehicles aside from a certain amount that we need just to pay the monthly bills.
Perfect. Thank you. I love that. And then, let's see, I was just curious, you know, I know that this is still a long conversation and development, but I just want to say I think that there's some argument to be made for the city of Eureka in terms of community benefits and when in terms of like the number of people who will be living here, who will be impacted by that industry and supporting that industry that, especially some of the things like our, you know, wastewater and water systems, I think could really benefit from, sorry, I didn't even know my phone was on. Could, you know, really benefit from. Yeah, just to look at like those kinds of investments over time. You know, because as we all know, those systems continue to age even as we make improvements toward them. And then, oh, the zoo revenue, like what if it doesn't increase? Like is that when, what you're talking about in terms of like then we'll reassess and kind of come back with?
Yeah, and typically what I do is I wait for actuals or I look at the past before I'm willing to up budgets. So typically, when I've increased a line item, whether that's a franchise fee or zoo revenue, it's because I've seen actual numbers come through. So instead of, a lot of cities will just project or they'll, you know, keep the trend going. I'm not comfortable doing that because I've historically seen revenues kind of hit a peak and then go down. And a good example is the zoo. When we introduced the otter exhibit, we saw record revenues for one fiscal year. And then the following fiscal year or two years out, they went back to normal. So I was very skeptical to increase zoo revenues too much, but the proof is kind of in the pudding at this point and they continue to exceed my expectations. So I'm not, I'm not doing it at what I think it will be. I'm doing it at a level of, well, they could go down and we would still meet our budget number.
Great. So like we should look for a unicorn or something, no. And then one last thing, I was just thinking in terms of sales tax revenue and, you know, and I know that folks are working on kind of a shop Eureka campaign and sort of like really bringing people here from out of the area for the holidays and things like that. And so I would love to see us, you know, kind of continue to invest in some of those solutions where we're saying like, well, maybe we need to, you know, put out a little bit more funding to whatever, you know, light up Eureka or something like that. But in terms of the wins it would have in terms of increasing sales tax revenue in terms of, you know, like helping support small businesses and really, you know, there's no reason that this couldn't be a destination holiday shopping area for our region. So I would just love for us to kind of be thinking about some of those kinds of things where, like how can we address that sales tax revenue also? So that's all.
Councilmember Contreras-Toloz.
Yeah, thank you first and foremost. I had a question actually about the zoo as well. How, how much of that revenue was taking into account any kind of fund raising on the part of the Zoo Foundation?
Zero.
Zero, okay, great. I sounded too excited just now, but I just, I just wanted to make sure. Yeah, and I think just, you know, kind of going along some, you know, kind of seconding some of what Councilmember Castellano said. I guess I'm wondering, or, you know, I've, I've had this concern because our city is primarily funded on sales tax and because sales tax has been taking a hit for a while and I think will continue for a while. It's just kind of how to shore up and make sure that we're, you know, looking out for our employees and then also like what she said, you know, trying to balance and make sure that we're not feeing people to death. I know the recommendation from Cal Cities, their taxation revenue has been for us to be really careful about any kind of like long-term payment commitments when you're primarily funded off of sales tax. And so I guess I just would say that we just, I think maybe we need to be careful and see how long this is going to persist and last with that. I was curious, what was the, we talked about the budget for IT going up eighty thousand and I was, and maybe we can just wait until we get to the eleventh to ask that, but I was curious. I wasn't clear on why that was increasing. You'd said some of it was for some programs or something, I wasn't clear.
Well, they'll see increases to personnel costs, but for non-personnel costs, software and cellphone charges, those are the two line items that are responsible for most of the increase.
Cellphone, oh, cellphone charge, okay, sorry, I'm thinking charging, like plug-in charges cost, got it, I'm there, okay.
Okay, thank you, Director Millar. And that takes us to future agenda items. Councilmember Bauer.
Excuse me just one moment, we just want to confirm June eleventh as the budget study session for everyone.
Five PM.
Five PM.
It's my job.
I need one more for a quorum.
See what I can do.
Very good, thank you.
Would, would four PM at all be possible or no? Is that like?
I think from a staff perspective, it could happen, correct?
It's, it's up to council if that works for everyone.
Four.
Four PM on the eleven.
We do four-thirty? Yeah.
Maybe I'll, I'll try to move my board meeting. And then, so let's maybe keep five and then if I can't, then maybe we can look at, I'll work on that tomorrow.
Very good. Okay, yeah.
So we staying with five then?
Yeah, we just want to be able to notice it by Wednesday. Oh, wait.
This is a special meeting, I don't need to, I can notice it on Thursday. I like to give the public as much notice as possible.
Okay, four or five works for me.
How, sorry, how long do we think this meeting is going to? I don't, I'm not trying to be rude at all, I just have to, yeah.
I mean, it could vary depending on what the council would report. I think we'd give each department approximately ten to fifteen minutes to present and I'm sure that Lane would knock his out in about ten to fifteen minutes. So you figure a little over an hour?
Okay, okay.
Just a note, I don't expect the departments to do a presentation just to be there for questions when their budget is presented.
And that's what I mean by the, that would be based on the questions that you guys have. So, you know, I know HR is very interesting, but I don't know how many questions you guys are going to have for HR.
So we're good?
Yeah, let's, can we say four-thirty, Scott? I mean, Councilmember Bauer, is that okay? So we're.
I will send out a calendar invite tomorrow for four-thirty.
Okay, future agenda items, Councilmember Bauer.
Just going to dust off the old request for Greenways and Gulch's ordinance. It's been a while since I brought it up. Would love to see that.
I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Greenways and Gulch's ordinance.
I like the alliteration, but I don't know what it is.
Yeah, what we'll likely do is give an update on this with the housing laws and stuff like that. There's some certain complex issues that need to be worked out. And so we'll have Development Services Director Kenyon and City Attorney Luna come back with some of those concerns that we have.
I can just answer the question.
And solutions, of course, excuse me.
It's like the streamside management ordinance that the county has, very similar.
Thank you.
Councilmember Moulton?
I'm afraid I didn't figure out how to articulate this well just yet, but I continue to be concerned even after some information from staff about our design review committee slowing down the process of building affordable housing by kind of stepping outside their bounds. And I'd like to, we, we had a presentation about moving from subjective to more objective criteria for buildings, so things can just kind of be checked off rather than going to this board that has their own opinions and potentially their own agendas. So I, I'd like to ask staff to bring some information about the design review committee, their purview, the process by which we choose those folks. And then I'd like to have a public discussion about whether or not we want to continue with that process because design review is under us. So we can decide whether or not we need design review at all. And if we do, then where we want to put boundaries around them because I'm seeing decisions coming down that don't seem to have much to do with design. And I'd like to look at that and just see if that committee is really serving the purpose that was intended with it and if we want to continue with it like it is, like it is or make changes to it.
Quick question, do you, do you feel that they're kind of entering the realm of the planning commission or something like?
I don't know enough about the specific purview of the planning commission to answer that question, but I'm looking at City Attorney Luna.
The planning commission has very specific tasks that they perform under the government code. And so design review is a little bit different than that. And as Councilmember Moulton said, we have a lot more control over what those parameters are. And so if council members are interested in learning more about design review and, you know, what the options are moving forward and what some of the concerns are that. and, you know, what the options are moving forward and what some of the concerns are that Councilmember Maltin has raised, then I think a thumbs up at this point is the appropriate thing to do.
Further conversation? Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Castellano?
Recently, I heard a presentation by Director Burks of HCOG about some of the things they've been doing. And I asked Director Burks if she would be interested in coming before council and kind of sharing an update. She said she would, so I'm curious if folks would be interested in hearing more from, from what's up in, in the world of HCOG. And, you know, they're doing planning around transit and housing and things like that.
That's Humboldt County Association of Governments, in case you were wondering.
All right. Moving on to city manager reports, the EPD homeless survey with Commander LaFrance.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and good evening again, Mayor and Council. So tonight we have Commander LaFrance here to give a report. This is the fourth report that EPD has worked on. They have, since 2018, they've been doing much more in-depth surveys of our community members experiencing homelessness than what the county does for the point in time count. The county does a very precursory review of, of individuals and make estimates and those type of things. This is much more of a meet them where they're at, have discussions with them, ask for more in-depth information so that we can evaluate not only our CSET response, but also our social services response to those community members. So take it away, Commander LaFrance.
Thank you, city manager. Good evening, council, mayor. Uh, yeah, this is our, our fourth, uh, fourth homeless survey we've, we've brought forward since 2018. We're conducting every two years. The last time we presented this survey was actually during COVID. We missed the 2022 presentation. Last time presented, it was over Zoom. It goes in my office somewhere. So it's been a, it's been a little bit. So purpose and intent, there's, we can go off on this for a while, but again, we're trying to get an understanding of the foundation of what our homeless population looks like. So, and once we have a general understanding, what are the needs they have and how do we fill those needs? It also, when we look at the survey, it's thirty, now thirty-eight question. It wasn't, originally eighteen questions, I believe, under Chief Watson. We put a lot more questions into it and people do definitely answer them. But it also gives a lot of our newer employees that aren't as embedded with our homeless as CSET is and has been over the past six, uh, six years of, of, of being around. It gives them a chance to really ask questions to get to know people as well. And so you'll see some of the questions. Some people are shocked that how in the world will our homeless community members talk to the cops? By far, when you, I, I believe I sent the raw data out to all the council and the city clerk. But by far, our CSET led the way and, and they got more than half the surveys because they know the people, they know them by name. We ask them very like detailed questions about drug use, about their life, are they, are they satisfied? And we get very honest answers because again, that, that human connection that they've made for years, you just can't, you can't dismiss that. And it's why our programs are so successful. Obviously, some other purpose and intent is we use this data a lot when we look at funding our programs like CARE, Uplift, CSET. Of course, if folks aren't familiar, a, a lot of the homeless money comes through Sacramento, straight to the county, not straight to the cities where most of our homeless population lives, which is challenging. Therefore, we have to apply for money from the county against other organizations and the county itself to actually get this money to run our programs such as CARE and Uplift. So it's, it has a bigger purpose as well. So it's kind of multifaceted. So here's how the survey works. We run a four-week sample. So this year is March 10th to April 6th. It's usually the first week of March to the first week of April. So it's a four-week sample. As the city manager pointed out, the point in time count is one night. And it's not an individual survey. It's like, it's a guesstimation. It can be, hey, I see a vehicle with, it looks like it holds six people. They write six down. For us, it's, here's an individual. We get a name. We actually go through all the information. People can refuse to answer the questions. It's not worth forcing them to do this. But again, we're getting a much more detailed, individualized answers and a much bigger picture over a full month versus one single morning for a couple hours. So personnel uses CSET, CARE and Uplift. That's been the traditional. This was the first year I have not been involved on the streets of doing the survey. I was just, as a CSET sergeant, I managed it and also went out and did surveys. Now as the commander overseeing CSET, I'm just overseeing it and didn't get a chance to go out and talk with my folks on the streets. And we use Survey Monkey. Makes it really easy, especially for my, my, my homeless outreach worker friends that don't like technology. So it makes it really easy for, they're phenomenal, but technology is not, not always their friend, but Survey Monkey, they can definitely do, so. And then we do it in person. We actually talk to people in person to get the actual, the actual results. So in total, the thirty-eight questions, that includes name and then also location and also who actually, what employee took the survey or gave the survey. Responses are, to each question are self-reported. So if we engage one of our clients that we know has a mental health issue, we've put them on a fifty-one fifty hold. We know they have a diagnosis, but if we ask them a question, have they ever been diagnosed or treated for a mental health condition? If they say no, for the survey, we put no. That's just how surveys work. So we know the data is always not going to be completely perfect. That's not how, how this works. We recognize that there's gonna be some plus and minor percent errors, but again, this is a good overall view when we look at this. And last year we had two, or this year we had two hundred twenty-one. Sometimes we have duplicate surveys. So I'm the only one, myself and Laura Montagna, the admin tech for CSET, are the only ones that can actually access the raw data. Otherwise, it's completely confidential. And so we can actually remove duplicate surveys if they come in. Because some of our individuals, they don't remember they took a survey three hours ago, and they'll still complete a new survey. And we give nothing out for the, to do a survey. We just conduct them and do our CSET and Uplift and CARE, do their normal outreach. So first thing we ask is for age. This has been pretty consistent across the board. Thirty-five to forty-four years old is pretty in that ballpark. Obviously, from forty-five to forty-nine, went up a fair amount this year as well. We saw young, a little bit younger, eighteen, twenty-four came in, but historically, the biggest majority of numbers we've seen. And you can see obviously the gold for 2024 and 2022 in white, our biggest majority is still gonna be the thirty-five to forty-four-year-olds with the forty-five to forty-nine creeping in. But we saw the same kind of, same kind of Beveller V pattern over the past four years of doing this. Not much is, not a lot has changed in the data we're receiving year to year on this, or every two years. Gender, same thing. It's usually a seven to three ratio. That's pretty consistent across the country. Seven males to three females are homeless. And then we often look at this number for our, compared to our population. This is about correct for us. Eighty-four percent are Caucasian or whites. Native American was a concern we had last year or two years ago. We had, but believe around thirteen percent reported being Native American. We work with our tribal partners. We work a lot with the Yurok Tribal. They have a new Kelly Johnson, who is the, was a senior program manager for the county, now works for Yurok Tribal, and I work with her very closely. And we were really trying to get, if someone's native, we try to get them connected back with, with their entity for support. And that seems to be working fairly well. But for the most part, a lot of the data we see here matches our alignment with actually what we have as a total population for, for race. Household, family status, most people are single. That's consistent across the board. We've seen that for, since 2018. If you look on the bottom, very bottom, it says incompetent or incomprehensible. So this is a good thing to look at when we're talking about mental health or drug use. So if people, if I ask, hey, what color is the wall? And they say alien, that, if it's, if it's not in the realm at all of the question, we can put it down as incomprehensible. And so as you look at this, you'll see the incomprehensible numbers go up and down. And that's also, it's a, to me, it's a good balance in looking at really what is, what are the challenges we face mental health-wise in our community with this population? That usually fluctuates between two and ten percent depending on the question. Who do you live with? Most people, again, they're single, so they live alone. Some people have a partner or pets. We often talk about challenges for housing individuals is having a partner, having a pet. So that's still strong and proven with this survey again. We're not seeing many children on the street, which is good. If we do see children, Officer Clark, who's our Mist Officer, our mental health officer, she is quick to act and get them connected with services very, very quickly. We've seen probably more children, probably over the past year with families. But again, we've been, actually, CSET's been very, very quick to act to get them connected with either housing with child welfare or, and or often Betty is usually a key, key partner for us. We don't like seeing kids in the street. Education-wise, most have high school diplomas. And we had one individual had graduate work, or reported having graduate work. And monthly income, more than half makes zero a month. So when we look also to the thousand, fifteen hundred, the average rent here in, I believe Humboldt County right now is around, I think it's either fourteen or, I was at the numbers confused or backwards, it's either a thousand fifty-seven a month or fourteen hundred dollars a month. So if you're making social security at nine fifty-four a month, you cannot afford to pay rent. And that's a common problem we've seen across with these surveys. And that a lot later show in some of the other additional questions we, we ask about barriers to why, the reason why they're not housed. So last time employed, actually a fair amount were employed within the past year, which is actually pretty good. And a very, very small percent have been never employed. It's only four percent reported that, being never employed. Obviously, if some of the four percent for like twenty-plus years, those are probably some more, more harder cases with mental health and addiction. Military service, we constantly hear there's so many vets in the street. That's absolutely not true. We rarely see veterans on the street. If they are on the street, we, at least CSET and Uplift Care immediately connect them with the VA or Nation's Finest, other resources. There's lots of resources for veterans. So if, if you are seeing people fly signs saying they're a veteran, it is likely they are, they could have gone through boot camp, but they didn't actually graduate boot camp, or they may have served but then discharged other than honorably. But most of them, if you're seeing that, is probably, there's probably a reason why that they're not being supported by the VA. But for the most part, most of our veterans that we're seeing in the city of Eureka can't speak at other cities, but our city, they are definitely being supported by the VA and other entities for veterans. Where'd you sleep last night? The Mission's being a lot, used a lot more this, over the past couple of years. We've seen that. Even with talking with Brian Hall, the executive director at the Mission, and Kristen Hans, Kristen Freeman from the, from the family shelter. So we are seeing those shelters utilized much more often. I know there's, there's still beds available at the men's side. The women's and family side is always a little more challenging. They are upgrading, obviously, but we're seeing a lot more people use shelters versus necessarily being outside. Still not good enough. We need to do better. But again, we've seen a significant increase in that. How long, how long have you been homeless for? So one or two years right now is the, is the leading. We're, we are seeing some, some younger people on the street or some fresh people. And we'll talk about locations in a little bit where they're coming from. But that's a general idea of how long have you, have you been homeless for? How long you've lived in Humboldt, right? We hear a lot of stories about we have brand-new people here all the time. Twenty-five percent of our homeless, one out of four have been born and raised here. Thirty-seven percent have been here more than twenty years. So we have some very, very vetted people that have been here for a long time in our community, more than twenty years. Again, less than one year, fifteen percent. Not saying the number's great, but again, we're just not seeing, we are seeing new faces. I was down at Free Mill last week and I'm, again, I'm out there all the time, but I saw a lot of new faces. But again, some of our clients that have been here for a long time are still out there, and they've been here since I've started seventeen years ago. Why'd you come to Humboldt? So if they weren't from Humboldt, we ask why, and it's commonly a friend or family or relationship that brought him, brought them here to Humboldt County. Better life is the new answer we had. So anytime we have, we have open-ended questions. We have an other category which allows the person conducting the survey to actually fill in a name or fill in a phrase or whatever the answer is. And so then we take those, those others and we actually categorize them after the fact. And so better life was actually one of the categories we created after the open, the, the other answers we received. Where'd you live prior to becoming homeless? Most of our homeless are from Eureka. They're, they are from here. Otherwise, looking at other states and other counties in California, other cases in Humboldt County, and then some of the other cities. So let's talk about where they're coming from. Reading's the number one place. We had nine people come from Reading, four from Shasta, nine from Oregon, five from Washington. Interestingly enough, we're actually working, an individual was brought here from Shasta last, the past couple of weeks, past couple of weeks ago, we've been having lots of issues with. He was brought here to be in, go in a program. It wasn't, didn't pan out. And so we, we're talking with those folks in Shasta to make sure we get that individual back home or where he should be because he's causing a lot of issues in our community. And that's just, we're trying to take care of the folks we have right now, and we're trying to avoid adding more to the population. But for some reason, Reading and Shasta has been the, the top two places we're seeing people come over from. So why are you homeless? Family situation's the biggest one we're seeing from this survey. Unemployment or lost their income, evicted or loss of housing. During COVID, we housed a lot of people. We were, I remember being out there with our case managers from Mist and with Uplift and getting people housed constantly. If they met a certain score, we had places for them. We'd be out searching the mornings to get them, make their appointment, pick them up and drive them over there. We saw a lot of people get, get in housing. The challenge with this population is when you house them, if you don't support them, they're gonna lose housing because they're often not able to care for themselves. They're not able to, you know, live in a structured facility, using, use a restroom or use a kitchen or keep their apartment clean. And so they need a lot more support. And we see that across the board with our housing programs as well. Seven percent say choice. And we'll see that question later, later pop up. Periods of homelessness in their life. So the majority have been homeless once in their life. Again, I can technically break the data down and say, hey, out of the, people have been homeless once in their life, how long have they been homeless? What's the average? I haven't broke that down yet. We can, we can filter a lot of data out. But the largest majority of people have been homeless once, and then almost twenty percent have been homeless six or more times. And those are likely, those are folks that obviously go homeless, get housing, or some form of housing, get, get either evicted or come out and back and forth. And we can probably look at that data also for substance use reporting and then mental health reporting as well. Are you satisfied with your current life? Sixty-one percent said no. Sixteen percent said yes, and eleven percent said neither. So twenty-seven percent are in that yes and neither category, almost a third. And then seven refuse to answer the question. But only six out of, six out of ten are saying that they, they are not satisfied. Is your lifestyle a matter of choice? Thirty-three percent said yes. This has been consistent throughout, throughout, since 2018. We've ranged anywhere from thirty to forty percent with this is a lifestyle of choice. Which makes it challenging when you're trying to assist people into housing or to employment. It makes it very challenging when people are willingly doing this and saying, this is my choice to do this. Now granted, there's probably some mental health on board. There's some substance use on board that correlate to that. But again, we're seeing that number consistently across the board for six years with thirty, forty percent saying, yes, this is a, a lifestyle of choice. Do you have a chronic health problem or physical disability? Same thing, we've seen more than half the population report having that. We also, we detailed some other questions about dental and some other, some other more detailed about that, which we, we also have, we can get results on as well. But again, more than half are reporting chronic health problems or, or physical health conditions. So it's definitely a challenging population to, to work with and to get support. Diagnosed or treated for a mental health disorder or medication or medicated for that? Forty-eight percent, same as last two years ago, said yes. We know this number is low because a lot of, I won't go off because I'll let Jacob with, with CARE talk about why we have these numbers. He's not here tonight, don't worry. But there's reasons why the number's low. But still, if you go down to Free Mill, if you spend an hour down there with staff, you'll definitely see more than forty-eight percent of the population have some type of mental health disorder. That's still significant because they, when you look at, overall across the country, I believe they say twenty percent of homeless have mental health disorders. We're seeing forty-eight percent here, self-reported. Where do you go when you're sick or injured? Of course, St. Joe's, right? That's the most popular place. That's why we work so hard with them to, especially with mental health holds, to really help them to, if, to ensure we're not overcrowding the ER. We don't have to. And making sure our officers and case managers and clinicians are diverting away from holds if possible. Because St. Joe's really gets overloaded. We divert a lot of people also from medical problems to open door. They're at Free Mill and Betty's Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday, I believe. So they've, they've been a great partner and their numbers are obviously up for their mobile, their mobile van. Visited ER in the past twelve months, about a third did not visit at all. And then you have six or more times, twelve percent. So that's, again, we can, if we ask more questions about that, my guess would be wintertime, we see more people go to the ER to get inside. They'll say, hey, I'm suicidal, I'm something else. And it's, it's kind of, it often appears to staff that they're trying to get inside to stay warm, which we'd rather they just kind of say, hey, we want to, we want to get warm. we'd rather they just kind of say, hey, we want to, we want to get warm somewhere. We'll actually connect with a resource versus versus going to the ER because ER can have up to fifty people, seventy people in the waiting room. They're a very busy place and then they have twenty to twenty beds technically, and they can open up to thirty beds if needed. What health insurance do you have? So most have Medi-Cal, Medicare in partnership has really come into being. Don't ask me questions on these because I'm not an expert about healthcare. Drugs are all alcohol been a problem in your life? Fifty nine percent said, yes, it has been a problem in their life. This has been across the board. When we asked this question six years, around sixty percent say substance use has been an issue in my life. And again, seven percent refuse to answer the question. My guess would be that seven percent would probably add into the yes category. We break this down. We actually ask, you know, what, okay, we ask the question, well, what drugs? So methamphetamine right now is the highest used drug by our homeless population, followed by alcohol, marijuana, fentanyl, heroin, prescription medication and crack cocaine, and then others. For sure, we've seen a decrease in heroin over the past couple of years. I haven't, I think I've seen heroin once in the past eighteen months, probably. But fentanyl or Fedi, it's everywhere. We had an OD today. We have ODs all the time. It's very, very common. And we'll talk about fentanyl here in a second. But methamphetamine, if you're a for historically for males, alcohol is the number one drug of choice, followed by meth, but for females, it's methamphetamine and then alcohol. That's been pretty consistent across the board for several years. How often do you use alcohol? So half said never, they don't use alcohol at all. And then on occasion was the second highest answer, twenty one percent or one out of five. My guess is the daily drinkers, we know, we definitely have some folks that drink a lot, all the time. We know them quite, they go to jail quite a bit. But there are definitely some heavy, heavy drinkers that drink every single day, and they probably operate at a very, very high blood alcohol rate. Methamphetamine, daily use, about one out of five are using daily, and then about half said they never use it. And again, this is self-reported. So when we get to fentanyl, we'll talk about stigma within the community itself. So heroin, drastic decrease. Heroin's expensive, fentanyl's cheap. It flows into this into the state and it's accessible. And it's, we're seeing it in various kinds of drugs across the board. But heroin's expensive or it's more costly than fentanyl, and so we're not seeing it. It's not flooding the country or into the state. So fentanyl, so about one out of ten are saying these daily. This historically heroin was like the drug, if you're homeless or you're using drugs, you do not admit to using. There's a stigma. There is a hierarchy within our homeless community, there within the drug, drug use community that there, these are the drugs okay to use. These are ones not okay to use, and you'd never admit you use these drugs. It's just how the stigma works within that. And so we saw that with heroin before, and now we're seeing it with fentanyl. My my guess would be we're with the OD rates we're seeing and how many ODs we go to, my guess is we're having more people use daily than one out of ten. And then again, nine percent refuse to answer the question. So to me, that's telling that it's probably around twenty twenty percent, if not higher. How often use marijuana? Forty percent use it daily. It's not shocking considering the county we live in and how how easy marijuana is to access and very similar to alcohol. It's a very, very easy to use. We often come across people smoking marijuana in public, which you still cannot do. But it's a very, very common thing we we see our homeless population using. How many times have been treated for alcohol or drug abuse? So about forty percent or forty five percent have never been treated for for drug use. One, yes, one to five times. They've been to rehab, one to five times is about forty percent. So I believe the latest data on if you want, if you're having a, if you have a substance use disorder and you're wanting it clean, it's going to take you twenty plus times to go to rehab. One percent of our homeless population has gone to rehab twenty plus times. So again, that's that's just the current number. It used to be, I think, with seven to thirteen. It keeps increasing along the way. Not sure why that is, but that's what we're seeing. How do you support yourself? One out of five say they don't. Then public assistance, another one out of five, SSI or SSDI. Again, if they're getting full SSI, you're getting nine fifty four a month, which obviously does not cover the cost of rent. And also just general living, getting food, whatever else. We did see the, we actually have a category for crime or theft, actually went, thing went down this year compared to two thousand twenty two. So people would ask me, how do you, you know, get money, support yourself? I steal. It's an answer that'll tell the cops. But it's how some people were getting getting money. Panhandling is also down this year as well. And you're receiving the following, any falling benefits. So food stamps, that's the obvious, that's been the highest historically. And then it trails down from there from social security, general relief, some get none at all, and then SSDI. Again, these are all top, top responses. If I put all them, all of them in here, we wouldn't have room. So there's a lot of services available for individuals. What prevents you from using public assistance? Almost one of the five said they're using all that are available. And then some people say, I don't know. I don't know. I just don't know. And then we broke it down to lack of knowledge, how to apply, where to apply. Some people say nothing. I just don't want it. I don't want it. And then what resources are you using? This is important for us because this is a category where we look at where we're going to place our homeless outreach workers. Where do we want C set like for Officer Clark when she's available to to spend most of her time? Because again, we want to target outreach to the masses. We want to go out also in the field and various locations. But if we can go to Free Mill and encounter, engage positively with one hundred and fifty homeless individuals that are there eating or low income folks or people that are struggling and make that connection, then that's a good strategy to have. So Free Mill's been the number one across the board. That's the, I believe it's the, based on our data, it's the number one hub in city of Eureka. It is likely the number one hub in the county of Humboldt for service, followed by the mission. And then open door, food people, uplift, Hatcher, and then Betty, we've seen a decrease with Betty. But again, we know Betty's housing a lot of people and is working with a lot of people to get them where they need to go. She's been a key partner for us, but we've seen that decrease with that. But again, free, yeah, Free Mills were were our, most of our outreach staff is spending time and they should. What resources, services, opportunities do you need? Most people want a place to live, right? That's a probably no brainer, but they want a place to live. Obviously, money, dental care was one that popped up. I know it's been an issue even for folks that are housed, this dental care across the board. Laundry services, we've talked about different strategies for that, including like mobile laundry stations, or how do we make this happen? But otherwise, the other ones take very consistent bathrooms always pop up that I need for bathrooms. Those obviously, those are always challenging. Historically, they've been very, very challenging to implement those programs. Biggest barriers for overcoming, for obtaining housing, lack of affordable housing. Again, if you're making nine fifty four a month and rent is fourteen hundred or even thousand fifty dollars a month, you're not going to be able to pay for rent and survive. Lack of income, lack of employment, upfront cost, lack of rental history, credit issues, assistance with paperwork, mental health issues. So luckily, the good news is a lot of those programs with through uplift, we're we're working on those in assistance out with care and and C set, we're kind of falling funneling through over to uplift. So we actually have a lot of these gaps we're able to fill, even though the numbers are still there. We are able to, especially things like assistance with paperwork. I know that many times we've helped people fill out applications for for rentals and then hand them over to to Jeff at uplift and Robert and Larry and have them work the other things that the gap fills that we have to have.
Pardon me, Commander LaFrance, I think we need to make a motion to extend the meeting.
Well, thank you. I'm just not on my game, am I?
I was so enthralled with your presentation. So yes, we do need to get, we do need to have a motion to extend the meeting. Who's in?
Sure, I'll move to extend the meeting to ten o'clock, just to give us plenty of more time than we need.
Second.
Okay, with motion and second, please vote.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Thank you. Councilmember Costello.
All right. So we have a lot of time for the last, the last question. So what's the biggest barrier for obtaining employment? So for the folks that we talked to, the physical disabilities or health issues, that was the biggest. Transportation is another one. Mental health issues, again, is popping up across the board. Again, if you spend a little bit of time embedded with this population, it's obvious that there's mental health issues going on. Not having housing. So you go to work in the daytime, you have no place to go at nighttime to sleep, get clean and get ready for work the next, the next day. Some didn't know why. And then appearance, so for clothing, hygiene, no place to, again, wash clothes for laundry. And then some people have criminal records. So one, almost one out of ten have a criminal record, therefore they, it prevents them from getting certain employment. And then gaps, gaps in his employment history. Again, a lot of, a lot of this data is why some of the programs we have through uplift, same thing with pathway to payday. When we have, you know, clothing hygiene. We work with Betty to obviously get people those, those needs as well. But again, we're trying to strategize on the programs we have and how, how do we fill these gaps along the way? The good news is, well, not as good news, but the good news is, is that we're seeing consistency across the past six years. And so at least as we're building our programs up, we're kind of hitting the the tart, the the issues we're having, kind of dropping those down. And again, we've only an operational for C set for six years, uplift for probably six years also. So but for, you know, outreach workers, four years and then with cares, just brand new, what, almost two years now. So I mean, the programs are still really new and, you know, four years from now will be ten years in. And so as we, as we are looking to projecting the future, the goal would be to hit the things that we can resolve, we want to resolve those issues. And again, using the data is important for us. And I can answer questions.
Thank you so much. Do we have any questions? Councilmember Bauer.
Wow, there's a lot to digest there, Commander LaFrance, and thank you to you and your and all the staff that work on this because it's incredibly, as you can see, complicated issue. I I'm not sure how many people are actually still watching, I hope a bunch, but is this available to the public? Will this be on our website, this presentation?
We can definitely make that happen. What we'll likely do, we haven't done this in the past, but we could definitely put out some social media on it and then post it on the website somewhere so that people have it because it does dispel a lot of, you know, you hear all the time that, you know, where all these people come from, and it's been pretty consistent that the vast majority of them are our community members that have been here for a long time.
Yeah, and we, like, we can also, we have the raw data, we can actually produce, actually it resolves the any confidential information. It just gives more of the responses that you saw and some graphs, so we can, I don't see why we can't do that.
That'd be great. And then another question, you know, you hear people talk about, oh, people are brought in involuntarily, like essentially they're trucked here. And I've heard it a couple of times from people. I'm like, no, I don't think so. But was that a question that we ask or do we know? Has that ever happened where people have been brought in, you know, basically put on a bus and dropped off here?
It it has. Again, with the survey, we asked, you know, why'd you come to Humboldt County or what'd you come to Eureka? And so that's why we had the, you know, the Reading was number one, Shasta's number two, and then Oregon's number one for statewide. We have an instant instances over the past several years where we're having people just, hey, here's a bus that could go to Eureka. Again, we had the issue this past week, we're working on resolving right now. You know, so say if we have an individual for, I can only speak for our end of how we do things, but if we have an individual that wants to go back home to family, we actually, our teams will work, talk to the family directly, Google addresses, we make sure that if we, if we help this person get back home to family, it is a complete package. We're not dumping him off to another community. And so that we're, we, we've been very, we've done that a lot. We've been successful when we have to get people either back to their family or we have an individual right now back in Kansas who's working two jobs. He has an apartment. He updates our admin tech, Montagna with photographs of how he's doing. It's, you know, it's amazing to see because he was probably a two hundred plus calls per year for service for EPD. And now we got him back home a couple of years, a year and a half ago and had a good plan. But we are, we are definitely seeing folks brought over here, you know, as an example, the individual last week was brought over by, we believe, was social services from that that part of this, of the state and supposed to go in a program. Well, there's no room in the program for him when they got here. And so for us, we wouldn't, our goal would be, hey, mission, we're going to send them to you. Confirm he got with you. Yes, we have him. He's in our care now. And so we make sure we're going from point A to point Z because we don't want to dump our, dump other, our, our people off on other communities.
Thanks again. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Fernandez.
Thank you. Yeah, this is very comprehensive. So thank you for that. And I know you'd said that there's still some work to be done or look over and reviewing the raw data. And so I'm curious just about a few things that you may not have answers to because of the need to look over some of that. Going back to some of the numbers there for the folks that have lived in Humboldt for about twenty or more years, that was about a third, maybe just a little over. And I'm curious if we're able to connect what it is, how that they experienced that, brought them into homelessness or pushed them into that. Would you happen to know that or is that?
I definitely don't know off the top of my head, but I can, I can go into into the survey and actually filter the information out. So it's fairly, it's fairly easy to do.
Okay. And then going to the folks that, and I am happy to see that more, more of them are utilizing the shelters. But what of the folks that slept in an encampment or a vehicle or a sidewalk that's still almost the same amount? Did they, do you know why those particular folks were in that particular situation? Do you know that one off the top of your head?
I definitely do not.
Okay, yeah. So a lot of the stuff I'm probably going to want is going to be more niche than.
Yeah, we can filter, the questions we have, we can filter out and actually get, and I can filter out just for, you know, people that stayed in the, in an encampment. I can filter all the answers out for that and look at the data and actually give graphs for that as well.
Yeah, and I think it goes back to what councilmember Bauer was saying and even hinted at by the city manager here is that this does and would dispel a lot of what we hear about why folks may be homeless in this community.
Yeah, I mean, the challenges with the survey, we originally started working this, I worked on creating this thirty eight question survey based on just research on other entities and other surveys. And we could have gone down a lot of rabbit holes, like we'd love to put aces adverse childhood experiences questions in here. But that add ten more questions and looking at a twelve minute survey and some of our, you know, members of our, of our homeless community, they, you know, twelve minutes is a long time. And so we're trying to balance out getting data, but also I would love to go down more rabbit holes. It just gets challenging because I could probably think of a hundred questions to ask people. But yeah, but we're always looking at in the future and, you know, two years from now, at least modifying or adding questions as needed and then removing questions if we don't need them.
Councilmember Castellano.
Sure, as as other councilmembers have expressed, thank you. And yeah, there's definitely an interest in seeing how some of this data correlates, you know, across questions and things like that, especially things, well, many, many especiallys, but one of the things that came up is just, you know, like, oh, for, you know, the twenty two percent who have been employed in the past year, you know, like where, where were they employed? What kind of employment? What, you know, like, might those be opportunities? And then, you know, just the relationship between fentanyl use and, you know, homelessness, definitely interested to learn more. It's startling, but, you know, appreciate it. And I, and so I think a kind of a larger question is just a two-part question. Like, it seems like there are so many opportunities to kind of use this data to then like drill down into like, okay, how can we do some of our other programming, support specific people? And I know at one point, correct me if I'm wrong, there were, there were kind of folks were making kind of like targeted approaches to to work with people who are unhoused of saying like, okay, you know, like, we're gonna focus on these ten people who are, I could be totally going off the rails. Okay. You know, focus on these ten people who are either getting more calls for service, or maybe there's more opportunities to connect them back into work or housing and things like that. Are those approaches still happening?
So under with C set, when we started C set, we, as a sergeant, I, we'd have a list of ten individuals that were a primary causing significant calls for service. And so we'd actually either, we would obviously use enforcement or or engagement with them, depending on what, how, how willing they were to to engage with us for services. But yeah, currently, under Sergeant Omi, I think he's doing five, a list of five right now. The challenge again with C set, they went from five officers to three. And they're also covering patrol. So it's been a challenge for them to get a broader picture. When we had C set back in two thousand eighteen, nineteen, twenty, there was five of us. Plus, we had Robert and Larry with uplift. And so even during COVID, I mean, we were able to do, get a lot done. But when they dropped to three to five, that's been definitely challenging for them. So ten may be a little bit for them right now, but that the goal would be to get, have a list of ten people we can target outreach with.
And without going into a lot of detail or politics, I mean, whatever, we're in politics, but you know, I guess I'm kind of curious because this seems like it would be so useful to some of our other community partners who are doing outreach work to to also, you know, maybe sort of refine their efforts or, you know, is this data being utilized by other folks with success or, you know, because clearly we have limited staff, but there are other government entities, et cetera, that have more staff.
Yeah. So historically, we've shared it with our partners. So I believe the missions use it for grants. I know for sure Free Mill or technically it's Saint Missus DePaul. Yeah. So historically we've shared it with our partners. So I believe the missions use it for grants. I know for sure, uh, free meal or technically St. Mississauga Free Dining Facility. They've definitely used it. Uh, we work with Bob Santelli, who's one of their very active board members. Uh, we share the data with him. We've, we've helped, um, give data in support, uh, for grant writing for them as well. I believe Salvation Army use the data. Uh, Betty is obviously uses the, the data. So we're definitely willing to share the, the data. We share it with the county. Uh, we often present to, uh, Director Beck with, uh, DHHS, um, the data. So it's up to them. If they want to use it, they can use it. Um, we're not going to try to hide the data. We're going to very openly list this as the data we have. This is what we're seeing in our community.
Thank you. Councilmember Moulton?
Thank you. You have to call my name. Yeah. It's in the rules. Um, thank you, Officer LaFrance. I really appreciate this thorough report and the work that you're doing to gather the data. Um, having data to, to drive our programs just really, um, makes me feel more confident about their long-term efficacy. And thank you for doing this work. I think the fact that you value the, um, the human connection and I did homeless outreach work around here, specific to youth for many years. And then that, um, just having that, that connection with people, um, can be difficult to do and it can cost a lot of the people that are doing it. Especially as you say, when you're talking to folks and you can clearly see that they are suffering, um, from mental illness and might be resistant to, um, getting help for that, which leads me to my question, uh, which it may be one of those, you, you don't have a crystal ball questions about, um, measure A and the change in the way that, um, folks can be helped when they are resistant to that. You don't know yet?
No.
Okay. Um, thank you. That wasn't measure A, was it? I'm mixing up my measures.
Prop one.
Was it prop one? One was about moving money around. The other one was about who can and can't be made to engage in services when they don't want to.
Yeah. So referring to SB forty-three.
Thank you.
So in, I believe the, uh, managing mental health clinician Rosen presented for that. Yeah, I think that's going to be, uh, I spoke on this at a conference a couple of days ago down to Santa Rosa. And it's going to be challenging, um, with SB forty-three, the change to gravy disabled. Uh, so in theory that changes a lot of things, but again, it, it talks about substance use disorder being a criteria for gravy disabled. So right now if we have, let's, let's estimate based on the data we have, we have 250 to 350 homeless in Eureka. That's probably a good general number. Um, so we take 60% admit to having a SUD problem. Do the math real quick. Um, do we have that many beds at St. Joe's to fill up? Yeah, the answer is absolutely not. So, um, obviously we've been taking an approach to make sure we're educating our officers when it is implemented in two thousand twenty-six. I believe that's when we have it, um, we've diverted it until two thousand twenty-six, I believe for the county. Uh, we've been working on efforts to make sure officers are educated on, hey, this is, this is available to you. However, um, this is not the first, uh, step forward and our, our officers have been very, very good about, um, mental health calls. Um, we continually receive recognition, uh, patrol, CSET across the board from the county and our community partners, um, on their ability to divert away from the ERs, um, which again are just flooded and just to connect people with services. So. And as for prop one, I don't know. We'll see. It's going to take away money from, um, the Mental Health Act. And divert it away. But again, that, that'll open up opportunity for the city to get, um, funding, in my opinion, to, for programs like care. And sometimes for, there's a reason we have our own program for mental health. We want that, we want low barrier. We want streamlined services. We want no red tape or limited red tape. And so that'll at least allow us to get that, that funding for our, our teams that work directly with us. So when it's three in the morning and I give a call to a clinician or case manager, um, they're going to answer their phone and be able to respond out if we need them. And that's really what our community needs is that 24/7 availability, um, to, to care for people. And that's not currently how the system works right now.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Uh, just one more comment. Um, I happened to come across, uh, a person in distress, uh, being detained in the wild the other day. I was just heading into a grocery store and, uh, saw someone shouting, um, why am I being detained? Am I being detained? And, uh, I stopped and paid attention to that because I heard that. And I watched the officers, um, very calmly and very respectfully talk to this person who then started clearly shouting about things that were not happening or in reality. And I was really impressed, not surprised, but impressed by the way that the officers handled themselves and that person. Plenty of people around, um, you know, they were very difficult and, uh, they, to my lay opinion, were being treated, um, with empathy. And I know that that's, uh, that's the goal. So I just wanted to, um, say, good job.
Councilmember Conchera Saloche?
Mainly I just wanted to say thank you. I really, um, as always, you're a wealth of information and I really appreciate like how thorough you are and just also that really almost any question that we're going to throw, you've got, you know, a good response or answer for. So I really appreciate that. I also just really appreciate, uh, the compassion and empathy that you guys are always demonstrating toward everybody that is in this population and struggling. Um, I've said I have a large family here and my large family has included people that have lived on the streets and so have some of the people that were dear friends of mine. And so, um, which is part of why I volunteer with that population still. Um, so I appreciate that.
I just have a quick question. Did you, um, have a question about generational homelessness here locally? Do you have any ideas about that?
I don't. Uh, I couldn't give you the exact data. We know that some, we know that some, uh, there are, or they're adults now, but they're in their thirties or twenties and they're, they grew up on, they're born in the green belts and they grew up on the street. And we know that their parents, same thing. So, uh, we know they exist. I just don't know the percentage.
Well, I too appreciate all the work that you do. Thanks for a really, um, robust report. And with that, we will, if there's no further questions, we'll move on to council reports. And Councilmember Castellano, we'll start with you.
Okay. Um, quick, let's see. I had breakfast at fire station three. Um, I attended Friday night market, arts alive, the kinetic sculpture race, um, the harbor two by two meeting. There's a lot, there's a lot going on with the harbor. Um, won't get into it now. Anyway, yeah. Uh, and Eureka Main Street meeting, uh, where there was a presentation on the community organizations active in disaster, um, by Nick Bound Crawford.
Councilmember Conchera Saloche?
Mine is very brief. This is the, I think the first I've ever really not had a meeting or anything that I was doing. So other than, um, talking with and meeting with staff about various things. And then I've been in Florida and DC for a week. And so I really have nothing to report.
Councilmember Moulton?
Thank you. I have no travel to report. Um, I too went to the kinetic grand championship and the Forest Moon Festival. Got lots of tourists coming around, uh, Old Town. Kicking it. Oh, it was really fun. Um, and then, uh, went to the two by two meeting with Eureka City Schools. Uh, talked a lot about sharing facilities between city schools and the city. A good reminder that they are two separate entities that own different buildings. Uh, but we cooperate so that we can do things like summer programming and town halls and the schools or hoopsters. And that they can use, uh, city facilities as well. Got, saw some really great early literacy numbers that are just improving, uh, just consistently with their hard work over there. And early literacy is of course a really great predictor of, um, later lifetime success. And, uh, you know, decreased bad outcomes like ending up homeless. That's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bauer?
Thank you. Um, had an RCEA meeting, uh, county, city two by two meeting. Lots of talk about roads and infrastructure and, uh, lots of friendly banter there. Friday night market was amazing. I'm sure, I think everybody was probably there. Everybody in the, in the city was there too. It was, it was wild. Saw the kinetics, the sculptures, uh, entering, exiting the water, super fun. And I, uh, attended a student presentation at Eureka High today to talk about, um, the impact of sugar consumption on our, on our kids and the possibility of some kind of, um, tax measure, um, which they, um, did some great research on and, um, I'm sure we'll be hearing from them soon. So that's about it. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you for engaging with our kids. I love that. Um, Councilmember Fernandez?
Thank you. Uh, there was no Redwood Region Economic Development Committee meeting, uh, this last month because of the holiday. Uh, we did meet with the Harbor Commission, discussed the much needed dredging that needs to happen and the replacement of pilings at the dock. Uh, where we received a grant and are hopeful to have the work done before the winter season. Yeah. I think you covered everything in the school board meeting there that we had. Uh, Councilmember Moulton, uh, they're currently awaiting a lot light adjustment as they continue to prepare for the transfer of the Jacobs property. And then like everyone else here, uh, over the holiday weekend, and then even this last weekend, there was just so much. Attended, uh, Eureka City Schools, Community Schools mixer. Uh, they're doing great work. Uh, you could tell by the outreach, uh, that they've done with the turnout of community organizations and leaders that they had there. Uh, I as well thankfully had the opportunity to participate in Lemonade Day and I was able to tour a few different booths. You know, not, if you're not familiar with it, it's an opportunity for the youth to learn business skills and resource management. The younger ones I got to visit, uh, probably about five, six, maybe seven years of age. They were raising money to buy Nintendo Switch. One of the older ones was, uh, was raising money because they recently had their bike stolen unfortunately. Uh, so various reasons and, uh, they did, uh, at least the younger ones did commit to donate 10% of their funds to a charity of their choice. One of them being Aha, the other being Food For People. And then, yeah, Friday night market, always grateful for the event organizers there. And then, uh, had the opportunity to attend a queer prom on Saturday as a chaperone. So. You know, with the end of my report, the next time I see you all, I'm going to be 40. So, thank you.
Thank you. You know what I wanted to share is about that lemonade day about the bicycle. What was really neat about that is there was a younger sister and that younger sister just dedicated all her time and all the profits to the older sister's bike. So she sat out there all day to support her sister and I thought that was so sweet. With that positive message, we're adjourned.